13, 2024, Goshen Board of Education Planning Retreat Meeting to Order at 8:00 a.m. Mrs. Shekul, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West.
Present.
This is Markey.
Here.
This is Pat Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Arera.
Here.
Mrs. Gray.
Here. I approve the Retreat Planning Board meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Did you get the first and second?
I didn't.
Okay. Mrs. Shekul, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes. I'd like to call for a moment of silence. We'll be in planning for another year. All right, thank you. Please stand as Board Member Cory West, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and it's a republic where we're just friends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Scherzinger, do we have anyone signed up for public participation now? Thank you. I'd like Superintendent Brian Bailey to start us off the day with a welcome and overview of the day.
All right, well, good morning. You know, I have to say, I've got, I'm blessed to be the superintendent here at schools. I look at my administrative team that shows up every day, and then on a Saturday when I ask, and I can say, thank you enough for you guys being here. I can't thank the Board of Education enough. It's important work that we do on the behalf of our students and families. Today is a piece of that. We've been doing a board retreat, I think, so this is year thirteen, fourteen on the district for me. We've been doing a board retreat, all of those, except for that time where we could all get together. And it's, it's helped us as a district be able to showcase what our buildings are doing. I know that we have board meetings where our kids come in, our staff come in, but the real planning behind this is, kind of starts today as we start to look to next year and to the future. So with that said, it's, you know, today is, is very important. We're going to get feedback. You're going to hear from the buildings. You're going to hear from the departments. You're going to hear from me and Todd about where we're at as a district and where we're headed. We're going to celebrate our kids, and today we're going to walk through, and this is just the quick agenda that we've, kind of, as we've broken the day up. You know, four hours or three and a half hours for you guys to give up on a Saturday. Again, I can't thank you enough. We're going to start, obviously, with me. I'm going to go through a little bit, building celebrations, department reports and next steps. Then we're going to take a break. If all this goes as planned and I stop blabbering, we'll probably stay on it, but we'll, from about ten forty-five, or ten to ten forty-five, we'll get a budget update. And then ten forty-five, eleven thirty, we're going to talk capital planning, facilities planning and next steps here as a district. Obviously adjourned someplace in there between eleven thirty and twelve. We've got lunch coming as well. I'll send you underway with lunch, or we'll sit and have lunch together depending on how this timing goes. But again, I do appreciate everybody being here today. So with that said, everything that we do here as a district, and I think my, you guys as board members can attest to it, I think the administrative team, they, our teachers. We work from a mission and vision. That mission, that vision, the vision of Goshen Local Schools is to be a district of excellence where students achieve their fullest potential through the highest quality instruction that ensures all students are career and college ready. A state-of-the-art learning environment employing technology and resources to support critical thinking, creativity, problem solving, connected to the community and real world. And then also a strong accountability system to ensure that we meet the needs of each student. And I would add one more too, that if I was going to change it, a strong accountability system that is accountable to our taxpayers and to our taxpayers and to our parents. Because I, you know, I do feel like we do a very good job of that here. With that said, we've, obviously, over time, we continue to look at, and this is what it's all about, is our kids here. Continually look at, how do we prepare kids? This portrait of a graduate's been developed. We revamped it about two years ago to the board. Probably time here soon to start looking at that again. It's not really a retreat time. It's some time throughout the year to make sure that what we're saying, that we want a kid to walk out of high school with, so their K-12 or PK-12 career, that we're preparing them. And what we do that with is, we do it one piece at a time. It's a puzzle that we've got to fit all together, and that starts at preschool to kindergarten, all the way up to when we have our kids leaving us here in about a month. We want them to be fearless. We want them to be socially responsible. We want them to be academically prepared. We want them to be effective communicators. We want them to be resilient individuals. I think a lot of times, obviously, school districts at one point in time in the year are measured on test scores or measured on, you know, standards that the state have put out. But we take that, we take that serious. We want those scores because that tells us that our kids are, you know, achieving academics and pushing themselves academically. But we also look at this very hard. Our staff looks at it. Principals look at it. We plan from this, and we make sure that our lessons and our activities and anything we put in place provides these, these students here and our staff the opportunity to get to this point. And then yearly, this team, and we'll sit down in a retreat, as an admin team, we'll retreat this summer. We'll go through our target areas. They're going to go through some of these today, but we have target areas as a district that we want to meet each year. They change a little bit here and there if we haven't accomplished something. You know, we then take a look and say, why didn't we? Or what's our next step to take that to the next level? Right now, our target areas are high-quality instruction, literacy, college and career readiness, technology education, communication and student development. So everything that they do within their buildings with their staff is focused on a set of target areas. These are the district. The buildings then go out and create their own target areas based off of the district ones because it kind of feeds on itself. So just reminder, these remain our focus. So I thought today I would kind of start, as I was sitting down trying to think about, you know, we've got new Board of Education, some young members. Obviously, we've had some, you know, some letdowns here this school year a little bit with some things, but I have to go back to our why. And our why, when I started the school year with this with staff, this is your one as superintendent and had the, the keys, but trying to, you know, express to them, and I think, I'm going to show you ten slides here that I shared with them, that I feel like is what we do really well here. The ten things that our teachers do to make sure that as we hit that portrait of a graduate, our job as a Board of Education, as an administrative team, is to make sure that our staff can ensure parents that this will be their student's best year of school ever. Kids only get one kindergarten year, one first grade year, one second grade year, one senior year. We've got to make it the best. That's our job. As we plan through this, that's really what we're looking at. And when I say that, I think these next ten slides help us do that. So the first one is we set the standard that I can't is not an option. I think I challenge us as a Board of Education, as an administrative team, that we set that standard as well. There are things that we are faced with from state level to, to local, to whatever it might be, but the answer of I can't can never be there. Our students need us, and that's the message we're pushing to them. We want them to be fearless. The second, and I change this a little bit for us a little bit, consider where students, and then I put communities mentality comes from. Without knowing where a student or where our community or where a parent, where their mentality comes from, you're not going to understand how to reach them, how to engage them, how to get where we need to go as a district for their kids, for this community. Whatever the circumstances, why they engage, we got to figure out how to set that bar and get us there accordingly. So, you know, I say, you know, that major question, where is our community's mentality right now? And I think we need to think about that as we go through things. I say this to teachers all the time. I'm sure if you're sitting there right now, your words have power. All of our words have power. I'm sure you can sit back and think about one thing a teacher said to you, or one thing a colleague said to you, or one thing that a mentor said to you, and you remember that. Whether it be positive or it be negative, you remember that your words have power. Our words every day with our staff, with our community, they have power. No matter where we're putting them, they have power, and people listen to us, and we want to make sure that we're, you know, speaking for all of our teachers, our students and the community. So I just say we craft our interactions purposefully, and we create moments for our stakeholders and our community to remember that. Last night, father-daughter dance, those dads and daughters, you know, we didn't have to say words, but we purposely create interactions for our community to be able to see that this is a valuable place. So sometimes it doesn't have to be words. I say this to staff all the time, and our principals do too. You got to engage first before you get to the content. And, you know, relationships are a huge part of what we do in, you know, in the public sector, in the private public sector with, with our, with our public, with our parents. This looks differently for our principals. It looks differently for our teachers. It looks differently for our directors. It looks differently for us as a Board of Education. But we have to, you know, we have to work together. You know, this administrative team, I hope that they know that we work very hard together to make sure that we're doing what's best for kids. And, you know, that's the same mission for us here today, is to work together to prepare for next year and prepare for the future. Remember, you're a mirror. And there's this old adage, it's called the blueberries, and I can't remember the guy that read it or wrote it, but everything we say and do, you can think about how I was gearing this to staff. Kind of goes back to that words have power, but we're a mirror. In the checkout line at Kroger, they see, they hear us, they see us. Whether it's, you know, complaining or, you know, celebrating, they hear us. And I think that's something that we need to remember because we are in positions that people look at for the leadership and for the tone that we set. So we're a mirror. I say turn up the microphone. Our teachers do an incredible job of this. Our building principals do an incredible job of this. We have to make learning fun. We have to make school fun to accomplish all those other things. We've got to turn it up. We've got to celebrate the positives. You know, we live in a, in a world where you can find negative at every turn. And when I say turn up the microphone, it's turn up the microphone on the great things that we're doing. And I think that's our communication plan. I think that's the things that our teachers are doing in the classroom. We want to make sure that people are seeing the great product that we're turning out here for the future of, of our society. That's what it, you know, boils down to. So it's not just turn up the microphone for teachers and lessons and make it engaging, but it's celebrate the positives that we have here in this district. And then let students make mistakes. We're all humans. We make mistakes, but when you go to that fearless and resilient, and this kind of comes back to I can't is not an option. Mistakes come in different, but failure is never an option. We have to figure out how to get it done and how to spring back and be resilient, just like we're saying to the kids. And then lastly, acknowledge the growth process. And I think that, again, these kind of scaffold on each other. It's the positives. It's the pieces that we're taking in the right step and the right direction to getting to where we go. It's a journey. It's a climb every day. But we need to acknowledge that we're growing, not just as a community with new subdivisions, but we need to just acknowledge that process that they're, you know, that's a good thing. When you have growth and you have opportunities for kids, that means we're, you know, we're growing and we have a lot to give. So, you know, I, I think our teachers and staff do a great job of celebrating their kids, whether it's just a student of the month or it's a note home to the kid. I saw the other day, Mrs. Scherzinger wrote a note to a high school softball player for her first home run. And, you know, those things, those growth processes our teachers do, and I know all of you guys do. So. Number nine, we have to manifest potential. They deserve it. They can, they should, and they will. But from us, it's our job to manifest that. It's our job to create the standard for this district and give our kids potential that's endless. So looking at that as we go through today, our job is going to be manifesting that potential and trying to find ways so that kids can continue to succeed and take the next step. And then lastly, sometimes I get, and these guys will tell you, I'm a detail person most of the time, but we've got to focus on the big picture. The big picture is Goshen students will walk out of our classrooms and they need to be future-ready. You know, I think that side of it, sometimes, you know, we drag ourselves sometimes, you know, down into some spots, but I think we got to stay above it all and make sure that we continue to look at, am I going to go back to that mission, to that vision, to those target areas? What are we doing to make sure that we focus on that big picture, and that's kids' futures? So with that said, done. Building principals have created about a ten-minute roundtable, and hopefully this thing doesn't start when I click to it, but we're going to do building updates. We're going to do them in, in groups. We're going to start with Mark Cook and GMS are going to present to Mr. West, Mrs. Gray, and Mr. Herrera, this is Mark. And then GMS is Mrs. Warrenkey, Pat Rocky. And then we'll flip back to hear from the other buildings, and then we'll jump in about eight forty-five to Spalding and the high school. So we're going to pair up here. That's what these tables are for. We're going to move around a little bit because I think it's very important. I think, you know, these guys are doing so much work with our kids and our staff that we can't celebrate fifteen minutes of a board meeting. Sometimes you can't put it on social media. Sometimes you can't communicate it in an email. But with that celebration, there comes challenges. And they also have, you know, some of the next steps that they, that we have worked through, that they're going to meet some challenges, whether it be, you know, a curriculum change, or it be a, you know, a state level change, or it just be changed because the future demands it. They're going to talk through a little bit of that. So we're going to look at that. I'm almost right on time, Gus. So we'll go ahead and break up. I would say Mark Cook is here, so, and Spalding's already here because you're going to sit with them. So then we'll do the middle school over at Stephanie's table. And then board members, you're going to join them in the spots there accordingly. Once I see it situated, I'll hit the go button. Draw our own timer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's for Bill.
Thanks. All right, ten minutes to start.
She's got a lot to talk about.
How you doing?
I'm the very proud.
I know, I remember.
How you doing, man?
All right, so your campaign is kind of just my topic. The front picture that you see there, if you've got a chance to take a look at it, are all just wonderful things that we want to promote. From family nights to musicals to graduations for preschool and kindergarten. I've gone catching a leprechaun, Board of Education meetings in the space of the year. Very fun academic and career dinner. Our categories are, you'll constantly see like a dedicated staff, very caring staff. Also see greetings of physicals, hyphes and thongs almost every single day. We're working really hard on the, but as Billy said, we're developing of the relationship piece. Relationships first before academics. Wanting the kids to know that they are here for 2017, that they are loved before we redesign academics and stuff. Very excited about that. There's a lot of stuff on there. Ten minutes is not enough for me to talk about it. But so I'm just going to kind of slide through here on the portrait of a graduate. He spoke about that. There's the academic resilience.
We're going to take a break.
Fearless, socially responsible, effective communicators. We have a lot of things there for the academics. You have a zillion otherwise. Our early literacy score, our early report cards, which are long-term things, as far as intervention pieces go, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, but we do also have a five-star step up to call it a preschool. It's been a very nice opportunity. Highest standards in for this. Always love our kiddos this year. Do a lot of with our first career lessons and working with the higher students for JA in a day. High school kids that come over and teach those lessons to get started in first grade and second grade, and it's a great as our preparator for our youngest kids. Like high school students, when they come in, emulate them and improve them. And their life skills and the whole school, basically, you're just really working on the education of the child. So resilient individual counseling groups, we work very hard, and we can jump in with our family specialists, Charlie Arizio, and our catalyst, especially that's where the teachers can go see that immediately. Stand as far as, it's not as hard. So once you get to the home, I got the whole family series awards. What are we continue to kind of get for your pack center time as you're grading and work on, like eighth grade, that tier's where you'll ever really see. Or on the academic departments, you have to educate the whole child from just that, which is not. Our whole sort of conversation through that. Where students want to fail and it's okay to make a hack to say, go in. And every teacher said they were, you just tend to, okay, their teachers come and try to recorrect because they're bad. Behaviors. We've got a lot of differentiation going on before we ask the staff to feel. ELA, and that promotes creativity and problem solving.
People coming in and out.
A lot of our students.
We all have.
Worked through the immune system, which is responsible. And in our building, we really focus on.
So we've done that with student-related apartment.
One space to next, stopping the student and saying, okay, let's try it again. A lot of that retention.
It has been successful. Another thing that's grown over the past couple of years, and we're starting assemblies, so when we take a break, we come back.
We teach what we're focusing on, whether it's that whole way the classroom is scheduled, every Friday, you know, all your report journal.
So much politics.
And talk about, you know, staff members, staff members on there that are doing great things. Then Mr. Larson has created this year, our two-page, so if you haven't got a chance to get on there, he just read a book. I think it was like a thirty-minute intervention. He's really into the kids' like the acting team.
They could be small.
Because they have us at this doctor's room in front. He loves, they really love it when he comes in with his costumes. They love it.
We average a hundred.
We did also for state, we're in one for PDIS, so we're in intervention. And we are.
Now, that's an average.
That's great.
So it could be more in one day, it could be less.
That's tier two and tier three. That's a lot in that, but you know, like I said, ten minutes is not enough. But we look over to the academic celebrations. We have this here on reading. Yeah, cadence, we do math in a cadence testing. And tier one and tier two, that's kind of a, you know, I don't hear it, or tier three might be. Your folks does that. So tier one instruction is the classroom instruction. That's bad. Shark tank. Two instruction in here. We are more intense instruction, more experiences like.
Aside from classroom teachers.
Does not talk about Kelly, Pat and Juan, just title. And we're to get that growth we've had with her course. And then tier is.
She's had, I should have.
Construction. So they've been in tier one, there's a tier two. And then come in one of the top four. We noticed that they might not be making a difference. She's very intense instruction, possibly, and Juan tries to stay in the small group, help our kids be a teacher, and then sometimes IS, which will be.
And then we have clubs. We had clubs last year, but this year we have them all year. So we tried them out last year.
I don't know.
Yeah, but we have our miniature team and our guest service. He's like, if you're going to sit down, they do this to me. Every five months, you know, we have the.
Looking at is. Post squad, but there are some kids that just don't follow any of the requirements.
They are to every single teacher out of tier three sponsors a club. On there about that, but we had a hundred and ninety-four students.
Her lease has an investment here too, which. He really talks about like.
Hundred and one students.
I know.
So. About fourteen students graduate, we create in part tier three, which is they made progress. I started giving some support students, retract them off of that. Could we do, there are some students that stay in tier three for a while.
I thought I said.
They're not. Like I said, our next, so that will probably go on possibly ten to five or six educational services.
Really happens to with that composite.
Data right there.
And see that through breakfast announcements.
Haven't had our spring checking yet. It's going to be for twenty-two minutes.
That's twenty minutes and that's.
They get it.
Thirty.
Had a twenty-one percent during the lifetime period. Yellow students and the green. That's amazing. I have that much.
Club for me. Switch.
One for. And the goal.
Try to avoid like.
Every middle school. Kindergarten. Yeah. Jump up as they get to winter. They're, they should be at one twenty-four. So that's why we try to encourage.
Try something new. Build a new relationship.
Being able to read not sense words.
We definitely.
It's, it's, it's a lot. It's a huge job for them to get twenty-one percent growth.
Other thing.
I wish that's based, sorry, that's based on. Issue maybe in the.
Yeah, so like that's a big chart.
Testament game.
Yes, yes. That's a benchmark. So in the beginning of the year, they're supposed to get twenty-six points.
I got you.
Teachers on average, by the time they get to winter, they're supposed to be reaching a lot of twenty.
I got you. Okay.
Huge. They jump there. Just to see that they have been moved out of there every case. Can we go through that to become a guardian? I think plus project.
Are you seeing that you're more of an organization of it, or is it more, they're actually more understanding and learning it?
I think it's, I think part of it's the.
Telling your piece.
Their training. Okay. Okay, um, but the sound that the letter makes, because it can make more than once, like one letter can take different sound. That's, that's tough, so, and they do, we do, um, a hegemony for the, for the, and it's every teacher, including our teachers. Circle time where they sit down after, and we talk about rhyming, where we talk about what sound is, and like, bah, and the kids repeat that, so. Because of that, and because this is our third year, final year with that, the science. The growth that we have made with this. It is, it's applying, yeah.
John's.
Yeah, so, and as you see first, first grade there, I mean, that's a, uh, it's just nice. The improvement was total. And there's a lot of screen characters, as you said, they're in our early fall, maybe, which really can find a space, so. Uh, second grade, I put a little asterisk on that. So, the goal of the fall was one.
One minute warning.
Oh, no. And in winter, it's one ninety, so that's a forty-nine, that's forty-nine, it's a, um, but we had a lot of kids, second, in second grade, we had nine. Um, and then ten minutes continues to, they already. And they were not reading things like. In second grade, um, so we. And one of them is actually, and that just kind of services, like, sales.
What the target areas.
But all of our students that were read or accounted for, it's behind that individual link, so nobody is falling through the cracks, smart. I only have three, probably, let me go to challenges and solutions, three categories, we're. We are.
Popcorn explosions.
There was no audible noise in the science technology. Should be a teacher reassignment rounds, we have switched to another from a grade level into this position, um, to be one of our specials. So, even though that's, I'm also very excited about the fact that, I didn't talk about math, but we are, um, tier two and tier three, that's our schedule, math, there. Which we haven't really had, we've had it at separate assessment, but kindergarten and first, it never had it. So, they're gonna be working with teens and teachers. Kindergarten and first grade, we'll do three days of ELA intervention, staff can try their time, and two days of math. So, they're actually getting that over our venture, so we give them, and then the second grade teachers are gonna be literacy. Intervention, so he's gonna be, uh, sitting at second grade. What I envision is like, we want teachers like yourself, and they can sit down with data cards and looking at literacy, figuring out who wants teachers to. Two, two math. Locks and two dollar. Yeah, it's a cadence, it's the same thing here with the reading.
I mean, to, to start math.
To start the math, they'll, they'll take those benchmarks, right, that you're just like this for math.
Would you track, so introducing, right now, that's what you're doing, so, when you do, introduce the math portion, would you track? By introducing math in two subjects now, that help, like, when you see your numbers maybe go down. And reading, because now they have to focus too on math.
I, I don't understand, I don't understand that, because the, the building is almost.
Right, right, right.
We've really kind of put the heat and light on.
Right, right.
Has a test in school. So, more focused, they, they know.
I would just be curious, and hopefully it does.
But what we found was this content didn't.
We interacted.
I mean, why you say this? But we're gonna do it.
Yeah, we're gonna do something.
Technology.
Starting from earth, right?
Yes, yes.
How you gonna fit more in? And a lot of the emphasis on, it's been on the, um, math differentiation, it makes sure that you're taking data that you're. Pushing the kids that are high kids, by your boss, and the kids that are not, working, pulling them back like they do in ELA, and working small group for them. Or one-on-one with them on whatever.
Parents standpoint, PTL, that's the difference in the building.
So, we're really excited about it.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and rotate here. Our go-to, so. Just the jump tables, yeah.
Wanna get. Hey, I guess I'm not getting up.
I wanted the two buildings listed. So, they're listed on the small thing, yeah. We get to talk a lot, but they don't get to hear something.
Okay. You can sit, to me.
I didn't want you to.
Why turn your headlights?
Okay.
The popcorn maker has started.
I also.
Spain your language.
I don't mess up your line in the morning.
Alright, welcome. Um, I am gonna try. Constantly see, um, your motto, Mr. Larson, myself, um, it's. So, what I did was, I was in the front page, and that's kind of the motto, to see our, to see our students. Um, front picture there, if you didn't, you can try to scan through that, or all the wonderful.
Everything that we try to do, you're at one of those categories for every.
What is night?
So, whether that be.
Yes, one-on-one students, team, or students that get, um, the new meetings. With family nights, graduations. It's really, at this building, it's really starting those meetings out, just because we want them to feel.
It's important, and there on this decision ship, to have like, the first experience with school is on what place, and be, like, I wanna come, and so I try to care those days. So, we're really working on.
Okay, so, on the inside there, um. Fortunately. Different things, I'm kind of, kind of run through.
And so.
The target areas are here. But academically prepared, um, have, if you come here, it's a real star.
I can start with ELA.
And you were, like, do you estimate what special, you can hear about your journey here. Have a place on our students.
I'm sure it's the other side, so.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 so that way you don't have to keep.
Oh, it's okay.
I don't care.
And so, uh.
In Ohio, school a lot, we also.
A lot of career, things that went on at school.
So, we were designated, it was tiers that were. We had my first career. And that process. Particularly involved, uh, a team of teachers that comes from all of this, they have lessons, they're on, uh, Ohio. Um, we had YouTube videos, Mr. Larson's wonderful YouTube channel, he events, he's on there a lot, but there are several teachers that have. He said he doesn't wanna be the, he doesn't wanna be the YouTube. And he can do it.
He needs a little something. So, resilient individual, like I said, education of the whole child, we did a lot of.
And so, fortunately for us, it's me, very closely, within every three years, you get family engagement specialists. Twenty-twenty was our second designation. The visiting.
To do referrals for students that may be having behavior problems all of the time.
Made it our actual recommendation.
So that we can really try to work with that child through.
Unfortunately. The academic.
Um, make sure they're fed, make sure they are physically taken care of, all those.
Cause this year would have been here then.
Our fearless learners, like I said, JA and AA.
So.
Junior achievement.
That's kind of a.
High school students, they'll come.
We just continue.
We teach to the kids.
So, they think of you as the second area that they want. Students really don't wanna move up on their. Um, and, um. We're inclined for BIS, so for recognition. BIS is that, like, career, just kind of exposing them to that, so they can see. So, the GMS. Things are very, very, very foundation.
Um, differentiation in academics.
It's a, and for motivation.
Have that, they just have ability to.
Um, it's positive, we have air intervention support. So, at the, the state, uh, we've had this program in place for.
They said it's, um, on.
If the state requires.
Also from tons, we have a PBIS system.
Yeah, so, we have, um, the postcards that kids get.
Yep.
That gets.
Hard on half of those, but this year we still scratch off.
So, the, the postcards were our various areas that we can almost time-driven, like. Not ever, right? So, you may have to, you may have to, like, retake them, right? Um, and so, Katie. And so, that's really easy, like, to put a teacher, or Mr. O'Ray, or somebody in the cafeteria.
Maybe like, I call it, it's interesting, that was a scratch off.
Great job, and they tell them, I know, it's, it's a quick interaction, but it can be from anybody in the building. Um, they, they scratch off. Good for the publishing machine.
Two port styles gets on there.
And then their second chance, if they get a second chance, they turn it in, and then we do a drawing every Friday, so, you can, and the staff also get recognized. So, uh, second chance drawing, if a student they recommend wins.
Try to get the, to be listening to that, too.
So, that encourages them.
As of all of them as well.
Um, Learning Box is, uh, something she and Kelsey, I guess, implemented in silver for next year, and then she's a literacy specialist, but.
We have that YouTube place.
Brand new teachers.
Education.
Shall as well be.
Yes.
With that.
Um, musicals, family fun night, time information night, lessons. Um, just, you know, making sure that they.
But Learning Box was something she did with her. Right, and those are essentially what that was, so, the staff had to.
Um, over to the right here, academic celebrations, tier one to the two.
Classroom.
Just to kind of explain that, tier one.
There was a teacher who said no. Which, to me, was a huge benefit of our culture, like, we got to the point where.
Tier two.
Staff members comfortable with any.
The classroom teacher plus.
Um, and it's. They learn, but it's not, it's about.
Kid is kind of pretty double dipped if you.
Whether in the classroom, and so, ELA department, so.
And then if we have students.
About it, then the math teacher says, if they can. So, the math teacher, classroom teacher, next year we'll do it. We didn't start until seconds. But, then take a deep breath afterwards. Just the power, uh, if they happen to, the teachers go in.
Tier three, their colleagues are teaching, they're just jumping in, like, helping this kid with their, their essay. And we must start to.
You know, this. Um, so, it, it just.
Now, we take these meetings very seriously.
When do they do that? Which, like, when does it, between other teachers? During their planning?
Um, some of it was during their planning, we also have the building.
And the nice thing about this intervention specialist available, we cover, like, students graduating thirty minutes. That they got these intensive supports, and now, we can, now that came down to some tier two, because they're.
Uh, you're making progress. Vertical contemplations on PB, we had, um, and. Tier two, or getting, like, that has been really a strong. That connection between.
Students, thirty's been.
Really positive.
So, those are, that was Randy Moore coming, with his presentation, she was showing her.
ELA. We have warrior workshops every day, and so we're. Intervention block, but if you're not an intervention.
And then even if.
More, uh, and so, tier two, average of hundred and twenty students.
Eighty-four percent of those students.
Is some.
Increased with all that tier two support, they increased our next color band.
But that's, that, because of that. Two and three. Yerogam, so, so.
Lot of good things coming. Um, and then.
Small gap closing in.
The thing that you see here is a cadence, or your.
Intensive.
Your cadence and after, both of those happen at. So, cadence.
Um, and then we had shark tank this year, which is now very exciting.
Five grade levels.
And.
First and second.
Had that. It's quite a big. The experience the kids have using their skills outside of just a typical classroom was great. At least done phenomenal jobs by doing a career tech class this year. She has had at least one speaker. So, but if you talk about different career growth, and what she does is, once she has someone.
Job.
So, tier. She does a mini on that career, before they come in, to talk about.
Science. Training, and our teachers are doing, which I.
Right, yeah. This is our third year with that, you know, certificate, how much does it pay? All of that pre-work, and then they get to. Sometimes it's in person.
And then, um, for the goals of first grade.
Is that, when is that done?
So, that career tech class is one of our.
Pay attention to the negatives.
And arts, it happens, they have it.
For our students.
Yeah.
And nine.
Each week.
Yeah. Now, kids are only in there. They were coming from. Kids have places, and they say, yeah, and they did not necessarily serve them, that kind of.
Right, but.
It is.
Like all your.
And all those.
Yeah, and they also, a lot of them.
Um, real quickly. Down there, um.
The kids get credit for that, too?
Um, at the middle school, their old school's not really, but yes, I mean, it's an elective, but at middle school.
Great, yeah. Oh, and, uh, we do a higher.
Um, I would have to ask Mrs. to know what.
Into that.
How they get the points.
So, it'll be a teacher reassignment, um, that's.
Very excited to do that once a week, so they're doing other stuff throughout the week, in their class.
So, using like.
Um, yeah, the sprinkler part, yeah, yeah, so she.
And benchmark.
Yeah, it's just one part of the class, so like, the other, she does the pre-work, I'm sure they're, they, they create.
One minute warning. Two days for math for kindergarten and first, because.
That's an hour.
I know.
Grade.
So, now, the yolks, are the kids getting exposed?
And they're gonna work with their.
Eighth grade does the yolks this year, we do that every year.
They can, they can determine, as they look at. Data is.
They're good enough?
You've got two teachers that are teaching ELA, two that are doing math, two of those ELA. A pie, and like.
We went to, um, JA.
High math kids, to push them, the eighth graders went downtown. Very excited about that.
Um, but, yeah, because.
Working on, trying to get those second grade kids ready for that third grade test. My name is Andrew.
Now, I would love.
Um, and then, we are going to be adding ages.
Like sometimes kids.
Um, really.
They go through an eighth grade.
Yep, the influx of.
No, I understand.
And when they get on high school, and they really don't.
That we're already in our intervention.
But they have those nights when they're small.
So, two of those. We're always excited to get preschool kids that are. Feeding into.
Yeah.
So, some of those kids are in there, and they're.
Maybe we just.
And.
We'll reach out and be quick.
How is this, could this be supported?
Yeah, sorry, I don't show her.
So, definitely questions. Um, I'm gonna explain the target areas page.
Can we get to the challenge? I'd like to talk.
Guys can like you so much through the days with our. Um, so, it happens at work, helpful too, but. Are there any, so, I guess, send the home, and parents can help, parents can. Is there any, it's really. Well, like, there's a set relationship piece. Agree. So, they are not just have. And then restart the next day.
Absolutely.
There's always a reset.
Get another chance, and, um, see what you can. In our building, five teams. Yeah, that's, that's really the mentality that we're kind of chasing, or making sure that it's doing, because it's hard.
Yeah.
So, this is beyond your control, as I just mentioned, and I'm sure that's. Waitlist for families that want their children.
Catalyst, another.
And it's, um.
One last move for you. Okay.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and, um, just got. So, I'm talking, on, on the mental health issue with it, so, what do you see the driving factor, because I've got a lot of feedback now. Excel don't being a major issue, as far as a lot of studies. Cause mental health.
So, in our, um, students put their cell phones pretty much in a.
Moved over.
In every class. Yeah, it's like the calculator caddies. So, when they go for a classroom. Um, they are allowed to have lunch. And all great, because even. Yeah. Yeah.
Lunch comes.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm proud of that. Yeah, I actually just talked to Joe Turpeting about.
Minor, minor.
Here. He's already working. They, they're not, they don't have them in the classroom, they're just told me that this week, they only have them before an. Yeah. And honestly, we have a. That's very strange. We're starting. I think.
They were.
What I'm saying is. Pick up mine.
They're one o'clock, they're waiting to pick their kid up at three, what do they do? Alright, thank you. To Spalding, for a, and high school, and flip spot.
Oh, sure. Just improving.
Just trying to.
As much as we can.
Someone's. Trying to improve our.
Camera goes off.
Now, we try to.
You're finishing.
Probably points of.
Alright, so I organized.
You find a reason why that. Feel like it's your like a common. Like reasoning that you're.
Very.
Same here.
It's.
Yes.
That's a.
I think there's.
Common in every schools nationally.
Um, you know, in my work, I think that um, a lot of it just comes. Just like.
I always think.
So.
Really. And we did. Yeah, yes.
Is it a private.
So I'm tracking a hundred. That are not.
These families, they're more worried about.
Successful.
And putting out.
Okay.
And.
Last.
Kids and maybe.
Nine percent.
Like, it's a world that is, I've been exposed to that I've never lived.
And this year.
Right? And so, but there's so many factors. So trying to really on.
I'm sure. Um, we've been.
Press those conceiv.
Instructional strategy.
Takes a lot of shot draws. To be part of that.
Regiate to individual kids. And we've kind of been.
Relationships they're building with kids. Really trying grassroots effort. I love it where in classroom, a teacher will be like, hey, Billy's not here again today. Hey, can one of you.
So it's really great to see.
If we move on, I'm out of track, can you text Billy and see if he's coming in today?
Um.
Kind of do whatever. Get him.
What about class sizes?
So our class sizes. Continue to go up, we're in about twenty-six or twenty-seven. Or um, little. Where it travels through a town, telling you like, once you hit. Or twenty-nine, thirty. Different career options for them. Uh, we just are. Seven, three, four, and sometimes even. It's up to twenty-nine. Yeah. Yeah, March twenty-nine. Part of the school. Yeah. And we're working on coordinating some. Their action lunches. Guys do a great job. I want to sit down.
Connect. Things. So I'm sitting here like. I apologize when I.
But it's. I mean, this is. I mean, you're supposed to. They're still learning. Maybe you're.
And as we. Um, we received a.
Yeah.
Um, which was uh, really exciting though, which is. That we improved our performance index on the senior report card by. Had to get a few stars on our value added, which is a really. Um, and like. She'll be mostly.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Doesn't know yet, she'll find out on Monday, so don't tell her. But it'll be. Um. I'm gonna get that.
Yes, time is. Started.
Ten minutes.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay. So it's um, it's really difficult to be able to. I mean, so ours is success, this is, we worked with nine hundred students and we're going a thousand different directions.
How do I say that?
But um, I think something that I wanted to stress by thinking about is our chronic absence.
I work with that for explaining with a.
Um.
To help us prepare for.
And ten percent of the school year.
Teachers all.
That number has gone down.
Readiness.
And um, and I'm, and I'm not gonna say attendance is an issue, but students. Which have missed significantly amount of days. That number has come south. Um. From the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Our council.
And to that twenty-three point nine percent of our students. Yes. And we've got that to.
We've got research. Kids. And like.
I did it backwards. Six point eight to twenty-five, twenty-nine as of today, so we're super excited.
I did mention in.
Um. Last year I came and. I had asked to be able to combat that, that we added.
Yes.
K T tech. In school.
New committee does models.
Um, and what that does, that gives us. Tier. Um.
Rates.
Are not behaving the way that we need them to behave, so just as a data point.
Genomine.
Actually.
Yeah.
Had eighty-nine incidents.
We have school.
At some event. And again, those days add up into that chronic absence. Component.
And we've had thirty-four incidents. Science coming up next month.
Suspension at this point this year. So it's.
Same with the schools.
I think it's just important to know that that is a resource that we have.
Resource in communication.
I'm kind of a believer in that. You. Were students by sitting in the paddles.
Um, and our parent.
Sometimes those kiddos are not. The students that want to be.
Population style.
Yeah. We're working with them. Monitor.
Um.
And we're.
On our back.
If they're on an I E P or I E P.
Under socially responsible, we are applying our self-aware.
So it's a good opportunity to be able to um, help them with. So.
Speaking our issues.
Yes.
Do you find that it's. Last seven for her. Presale count, maybe fan members or the work.
Um, yes.
With the. Ruckus and things. I mean, we're. But then. You feel it's a challenge to have.
Also been doing some second steps with last days.
February, which I think could be. Earlier on the.
I, I, I do, I, you know, again, I've been an elementary principal, so I've seen the difference. And I think what happens is as high school students get older, in some situations, not all, in some situations, and it pairs up with some of these.
Or.
That.
Yeah.
They are.
And we also have multiple. Fair摊. That are participating right now. Um, injustice.
Our skills still. I've been willing to do.
To.
A lot of.
That's just kind of.
Get us a little bit bad. Have to call us and say.
I wouldn't everybody we can.
I, I can't, I, they're old enough, I can't get them out of the house, so. Um, yes, to answer that question, right? Um.
So we.
Now, you have.
Potentially.
And then a whole other piece comes in when we have an eighteen-year-old, that is.
And then.
Call that to other parents, I'm not gonna come to school, so it.
Well. It's a challenge. Tiffany Singleton is one of our.
And.
As I go back, I started in a tree school.
A lot of time to your.
That's what I'm.
Imagine if I.
So I'll see you that.
I know.
Me too.
I like. You live in my house, right? You live in my house.
I had a.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. But I mean, think about babies now, babies get up and they do with their. Like, come on, we're gonna go to school and then we have seventeen, eighteen. That are like, no, I'm, I'm not.
I think that's a culture that starts back in elementary school and then, you know. Yeah, just think about that. Would do, wouldn't that challenge you? Exactly. As much as anybody else.
Oh, yeah.
Much scared out. Um, I've got our lives.
Um.
Those.
No, well, no, no, no.
This is.
We use that.
Cover contests.
Yes, yes, instead.
It helps with the.
Right, it helps with the chronic.
Um. And the. That are big.
That is new as of this. So it's, so it's impactful, so when you look at these numbers, our school, um, that's significantly different.
Throwing more.
Here is there, so. And again, when you think about free. Fenders.
Really.
I think.
Some additional.
Days suspension, five days, seven, ten with a red, like that, that, you know, it's counterproductive. It's. So it's something that we're pretty. Right, exactly, that's something that we're pretty passionate about really. I do wanna to say, of my biggest um, successes over a period of time is our graduation rate. And I'm anticipating approximately a ninety-eight percent who have two students that.
Jen does. Do not allow our work with attendance to out one of the.
To the.
Directly.
Like.
With the district.
But it's not from a lack of, of trying, they also both.
We're looking to get parents to.
And um.
So kind of. Ex to school with kids. Valley. I know the middle school, high school talks about like.
It's.
Student motivation a little bit. Being a.
And um, the other is um.
So. Thing we need to work on changing.
So.
Getting into.
There are some situations that we just are unable to get our hands on kiddos. I um, and I'll have Chuck talk a little bit, that ninety-eight percent would never happen without a program. Like um, sent to.
Have a recruiting piece of you know these kiddos are in college and um and finding teachers are more and more difficult today. So I think that that's been a really good.
I could have probably.
We're in the second era of this.
But I think one thing that I really.
Also. Intervention and then also enrichment.
That would I could.
Some of our highest level students that have gone to UC Claremont to be an opportunity. Opportunities, but again it teaches them on the college campus as a freshman or sophomore to start thinking about um what's next after high school. And then also um a rush for our teachers during summer school. And I just like that to continue to pad this year as well, which is valuable. And again, when you think about our hands, that equals top batches of students that that need to be able to have that intervention support. So we're super excited.
But we've seen.
Last week, last week, last week, I've um never seen Ohio. The old, yeah, I think it was Monday, um the old Ohio Department of Education came to us to do. We had two members to come and see our tutoring program and actually walked away saying that we were the model with how many have.
Perfect.
I agree.
Man.
We're sending freshmen.
So in in as.
Where's my award?
And this is a disgusting.
You can do it again.
That a lot of different areas.
No, I'm just, I'm just. So to me, that's real.
What's your question?
No, I'm just, it's interesting. Do they go with teachers? Do they go other?
Yes, teachers, yeah, it's a tutoring.
You gotta understand.
No, 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 but I but I will.
It's mostly.
Yeah, that's what I.
We try in so many realms to get kiddos to trade opportunities in college. Because again, we can't assume that our students have college-going parents for the abilities to be able to get there. So it's like giving them every opportunity they've got. Right, absolutely. Um communication, I I always try very hard to continue to tell our story, otherwise.
Because this has got now, we don't have.
Um I would be, I would be silly if I don't mention our. Had um was very successful season. And um. Um esports continue to be a pride and joy for our kids. And it also brings in kiddos that otherwise might not be involved in something in the student set. Super proud about that. Um and we've spent some money and resources on pro course. And it's getting our students stronger or athletes stronger to be able to better compete with schools that that have had an opportunity to add. I I've heard the same, yeah. So grid assessment mentoring, we have talked about this for a couple of years now. And that is our students taking a survey. Tell us their strengths and weaknesses as a learner, as well as interests um for career paths. And I have numbers down here of exactly how many students have had that survey. And then. If they already know this, they have an mentoring opportunity with somebody. Some out there um identified area for um a career path. Yes, absolutely. So that's.
That's.
We are constantly looking at college career readiness. And as Pat said, we've got a spreadsheet of every, every opportunity that we've provided students from freshman year.
It's not a print on.
Only. And instead they needed it because they don't even.
That's really cool.
So we have had some success with Flex Factor through Central College. And I'm if you're on the outside, a lot of pride is about that. Our kids are doing really well with that. They're continuing to, everybody who knows in Spatton Dayton area.
Is he.
Uh that's, that one is true. That one's true. Yes, he's. But that's, that's the one with the shark. Yes, yes, and access. We had multiple um. Exploration field trips. And again, I I dead knows that I say this all the time. We hand a diploma to the students and that's the end of their story. I don't know how successful we are. So we need to make sure that we're giving them opportunities.
Oh, okay.
So it's not something. Mentoring, we had a hundred and ninety students that we completed in that juniors. And then we had a job in our one hundred and twenty seniors participate. Relationships and they're starting to understand what it means. Well, what does it mean to be a part of H back? Because again, if you haven't had exposure, you'll know that that's not. Absolutely. Absolutely. Um CAP and Home Builders Association has been um and.
That's so hard to.
For our students. I'm I'm so excited about what that's going to do for some of our young ladies and young men that are involved in that. And then we had a PD opportunities staff um regarding CCR and trades. And and it was, I think as you drew with. And the years you think about that, which is. And that is where they are for the times and highly combat. But our our teachers need to know the why is what's. Right. Trades, what are they looking for and how to be, how to be able to walk in and be successful. So that was one of our best, I think, key opportunities that we've had.
They're very motivated.
Yes.
So can you all to county S C. Yes. It's still a bit funny, miles than any other.
What do they use kids like if they don't come. During the.
We we make.
Um whatever.
Continues over.
Two week X turnship at summer and they'll go to the turn and they'll write lessons.
Yes.
I mean, Melissa's case.
We were just um a word that looked like a word for improving our community index by three or more points. See the value around. Stars by the Ohio.
Not everybody.
That was something that's doing just in essence, it's it's telling us that we're growing and.
Some of those.
Um that was. We just got a certificate.
That should be our.
One minute warning. Um it's a continued focus. I will, I will. Um I added on the second page um some data. Then I'm not going to go into the numbers that you have in here of science suicide and how many students were supported as a result of data that came in. Um benchmark readiness. These are some data points that really tells us about how our students are doing compared to um. Last year. Just to keep a tiny little.
The time I've been here, I believe the program is around seven or eight years. Uh the short time I've been here, I've had former colleagues reach out to me to ask me. Hey, look, how do you guys staff this program? Was there having.
Surely that's when you.
We're supporting kids.
Just all.
Everybody.
But I will say, Kate and Brian. And Billy. Yes, as a one-on-ones. That is absolutely. Do you have follow-up on that with folks that graduate from your program? We don't have anything in place as far as follow-up, but that's something. I would like to see that just because if we're following up on seniors that do graduate. Yeah. I'd like to see what where are our. Folks. And what they're doing in life.
Extract that out from seniors where they don't sit down. They have them absolutely.
Yes. They're they're included in the. I think I know what you're.
Yeah, yeah.
But I want to know what they're doing in life and how successful it's.
And we have, we have to answer to that. We have a senior survey that goes out. And here are able and we have to report to the state what they're doing one year later. But I, that's a good point of being able to extract out to see the success kiddos are doing. Um.
Thank you.
Quick, fast, um individual graduation plans for students. That's something that we want to continue to refine um in coming up with a with.
That's true.
Um a system to be able to do that. So we're playing with school groups. And that is going to be something that we're hitting in next year. Special education, we have growing members with units, which equates to space and we're. Through that. Um I talked a little bit about attendance continues to be an issue. And I heard the middle school conversation that's very similar. Um I having conversations, having the courts that are there to follow up on those pieces. A sin helps us with kiddos that are not able or choose not to to come into school. Um a big piece for us, credentialing and seal documentation, that's that's a huge um piece of. Tracking two hundred and forty-one seniors and um again, we have a school link system that we're going to be starting next year to help us with that. And um and again, I it's not that we're doing a bad job. We're continuing to refine what are uh opportunities for ultimate. Um looking at some work-based opportunities. We currently have twelve students that physically do not walk into our. Um second half of their senior year because they're out and they're working and they're holding jobs. We want to continue to be able to provide that opportunity for students.
It's something we can talk about later, but I'd love to know. I'd like, I love your child, you know, the communication. How we continue to tell our own stories so that others. Tell it our own stories so people aren't out there telling different things about us. So I want to know as a board, um if you could think of how big. Efforts, how like we can be sending that same positive message and all the great things that you're doing. So um not only through like our, kind of like through our Facebook, but like how do we continue to promote the great things that you're doing? Share with our community of people um in different areas because there are so many success stories.
Right. I want, should I say the uniqueness of opportunities for finding for students also because. This is. Hasn't. Well, out there in Claremont County too.
Yeah.
And he's just like, how do you guys do that? So it's um just a lot there for our kids.
Yeah, so many great things happening. Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, in the backside, how are you looking?
Um it's it's going to start getting a little uncomfortable this year, this next year.
Next year.
Sorry. Yeah, and it's.
Increase special aid numbers.
Okay, so we have to have an increased unit that comes in, which takes a whole classroom. Um we have more traveling teachers than we've ever had before.
What do you mean by that?
That they don't have a physical classroom and we're bouncing around. Um but that's going to unfortunately, it's members rise, that's.
Hey, I'm giving my all.
I you are giving.
That's really awesome.
You have, you have. For sure. Thanks. Thank you, guys. Man, I know, I know.
And you were.
Oh, no, I understand that. There was one minute on the clock and you were like intervention.
No, you did not.
That's funny.
Right, you know. Not to waste any time.
Okay, I'm gonna go.
And she's gonna.
Okay, so um successes. I you're going to hear successes and area of refinement for attendance. I'm looking at. Chronic absenteeism for us has gotten better. And what that is, is the percentage of students that miss.
Last year we had twenty-nine.
And we have really taken a. Last year. Had twenty-six point eight percent of students. That.
Yes, I was just going to say shout out to Shulee because that stuff is definitely transferring over.
But going in the right direction. That's some really. I I also had.
Model called workshop, which we teach.
Monitor last year, which is our.
And we've done some.
Model. And I think that's directly. Number, people below that number of out. As of today, last year was.
Just nice to be.
Now know that those could be three days, one day, a mixture of days that our students have absent. They're out. There are thirty-four. Um our. There, so I'm not saying that um the behavior, although I feel it is. It's basically just that how you're providing.
A to Z careers.
Um for students has changed. So when they're in P P.
Really doing a March.
Their teachers come down by the segments.
They won.
And it also gets us away from. The usual.
Careers.
Of being bad because they.
Our counselor is currently working.
Or relation.
Data watch now attached to start with the more accounting expulsion.
At abouts in their backgrounds and they got to that. So. After. Events with our girls on their. Multi STEM programs.
Still have to come. They do, they do. Um I think one of our biggest successes that we have at um.
That are.
Yes, that. We um. Graduation rate is solid and I.
That are.
Ever say that that is not a direct result of the work that our staff does, but also we have a.
And they're like.
And that is such a vital people.
Which will be.
Um. And supporting students that perhaps don't place themselves or have some kind of circumstance that otherwise um they would not have here. I am too. To dropouts this year and um that that pains us a great deal. They both are in. But but it's it's stuff that's that a school can't help in that situation. Um. We um I want to talk a little bit about our collaboration with UC Claremont in the tutoring program that we have. Um we had the Ohio Department of Education, which is now called ODU, in our building on Tuesday. This is for actually coming and um observing the tutoring program that we have. And um and and they were bragging about that quite a bit and saying that we were a model. System, right, for for them to be able to.
I think that really makes.
We're in your queue of this collaboration and um and and it has multi purposes in my perspective. One in.
When you teach yourself.
In the building to be able to help us.
Seven hundred twenty when you're like seven hundred.
But it also is.
Okay. Tell a kid.
I want to. And then self-disguising is also recruiting. Right, I see these folks that come in and I'm like, oh my gosh, when they're ready.
They start.
So it's, you know, we're in a time where. We're like, well, teachers, I think that's another positive for us as well.
Other part we didn't say last time. Matt's daughter.
Yes.
Is also being aided as a tutor because our our credit kids, our C C.
And then.
So.
Group call. Side that kind of.
For, so it's a.
Two groups there. We used our group. And earlier in the year when we came.
Also are working with, we're using them in Richmond. We're um.
Effective.
Some of our students in our college instruction have a writing session, right? It's amazing. It is amazing. But it also, it's another, another touch on a college campus. So we're starting early so that students can see that college is an opportunity.
I've done a lot.
If perhaps they're first generations then or um. Don't have transportation. Have our tutors here during summer school. And for us, summer school is credit recovery for student teachers.
I'm I'm talking like about.
Receiving credits. We're here.
We're talking about just positive.
Um.
Could work.
I'm here communication. It's just needs to continue to tell our story because we.
And then.
And and I think some. In different.
Done.
That we do as far as.
I will keep looking. Your Monday night. Um and then.
I'm not.
And we've even got our science fair, so the opportunity.
We are able to. So tell our story, otherwise.
Our STEM club wants her story.
Um.
As far as.
I mean, great seasons and it's it's important to showcase that. Again, I'm going to keep saying. Has been fantastic thing. And sometimes that is those that otherwise would not participate in an after-school event, right? Um to be able to come out and and to see our kiddos walking around with their esports sweatshirts on. Such pride. It's it's amazing.
And our scholarships.
Oh, my gosh, yes, yes. So I love it, love it. Um pro sports or pro sports is another opportunity. Our weightlifting trainer uh to be able to come here. It's our students, again, another step up. They're getting bigger, instructor in doing it. A which way.
So she's been doing some seconds.
Edit it. So I think that's something that we need to continue to um. So. Um I put up here a grid assessment mentoring and I've talked with you about this past. But if you look at our numbers that are down the art, hundreds of students that are that are participating in that. Again, it's it's understanding what you're doing at an early age and starting to have some intentional conversations about what you could do with the rest.
For example, justice.
And it doesn't mean like, hey, you're trapped into that. But it's like, oh, gosh, I've never thought about that. If I'm good with my hands and found this path, this might be a good opportunity. So um it's something that we believe in and we use that um information later. Because I'll come to Pat and I'll say, here's so-and-so and he's really struggling for something. And the first question he asks is, did you do the grid survey? We pull it out.
More hit and miss with their seniors because that happened a few years back. But I feel really confident with our sophomores, freshmen as well. Or a kind of that answer, right? Right now with the seniors.
Right, right, yes.
We kind of can't. Actually, we did write that down this year, the seniors that had not completed.
Beth Kendall is our um tech leader and she sends out weekly tech tips.
Increased emphasis.
We've got lots of different ways.
We see our opportunities. Um Flex Factor, our kids are soaring at that and they're doing so well. Um we have multiple educational career exploration field. That's going to send something out, I think, too. I think that's all of the opportunities that.
I've got to.
It's.
Emotional, emotional.
Click on.
Being mentoring this year, a hundred and ninety seniors participated, the job fair, a hundred and twenty seniors participated. Our relationship with CAP, the Home Builders Association, PD opportunities for teachers to understand um. What are the trades looking for so that we can guide our students? Um I.
An element of.
Momentum Award, we just received an award by um Ohio Department of Education workforce. For growing students on last year's report cards. That's.
Attendance rates.
Mental health, that's something that I continuously look at. The page over is some of them, not going to go into it, so we're running out of time, but by use.
Agenda.
Times of suicide, um targets students that that needs some type of.
Um but it's.
Readyness, it's just looking at our passage um and what we're anticipating to score as. Um A Sin Academy, Chuck.
Yeah.
Um we gave over the last.
And then looking at um our.
Session, I just wanted to add that. That having a program like this.
Our third through fifth.
Change our. Uh.
February predicting that we.
I don't have something like this. Catch a lot of those kids, junior seniors and minors, especially that are credit deficient.
Again, this is the beginning of February. So we were already. Three, four, five stars. One that weren't half ago. I'm really excited to see what the data will come out.
Tears me up because.
And eighty-three percent of our students.
Decided to move away. And not go anywhere else. So we are.
That's.
So um that's things. Other than that, though, we're we're having a lot of success this year. Yeah.
So two in one is kind of that everybody gets.
Eighteen, we have eighteen more to go. They're on their uh.
Thirty-three days. We got it, we got it, we got it.
Or you ask. Now, when we send kids out to all these activities or events, opportunities, that members go. I'll give. Chuck has went on. It's meaningless. It really is. That's their administrator, their leader that's also coming out with them. So.
It's safe. It's safe for them. I trust you. It's safe. You're not going to be in a situation where I'm not going to be successful.
Correct. And what's challenging is when we give opportunities that one of.
And then. Your staff are. Said to them was like. So I'm like, I could probably. Um but I really have to shout out our.
Having been successful.
None of my.
So they automatically. Um quick and fast areas of refinement, um individual drug addiction plans for students. And um credentialing and seal documentation, that's about having a platform to be able to help us with that. We were signed up, ready to go with Transio and had trained our staff. And that company fell apart. So now we're starting in hand. So those are areas that students work on. Um we're always going to continue to look at attendance. Um you know, I again, we.
I'm doing that.
Just educating our community and our students and our parents to know why it's important here. Um. Have twelve students on work with us that are seniors, second semester, that are out. And um doing great things and and we're going to continue to work on a model where that is um. Cleaner and more students can have an opportunity to.
I started with one student and we were kind of erasing it all, put all the. Yes. Once, I mean, one day, like that's a rate double digits.
Wow, yes. And then the last thing that I have on here is.
Cooperative.
Um in regards to a lot of things, but special education.
As far as cooperation.
Sure, which is going to give us another unit, which is another classroom that I have to. Body else. And um and that as as. Is going to continue to be a problem for us. So again, we're just trying to learn. Cooperative and thinking about means. We have several teachers that are that are travel teachers. They don't have a classroom of their own at this point and I anticipate that that's going to continue. I think we're going to feel it a little bit more this next year. Um talking about that staff and.
But I can go in and look at every student that.
You guys have question.
So I can tell. They're having a problem and if I need to reach out.
Um I think we have thirteen that are coming in. So um we have two units ready, some in classrooms, we have a third um. It's going to take a couple of years, numbers, you know, it's just like anything, numbers are funded with with particular classrooms.
Bells out, but if a good tennis do get right extra recess or pop.
Yeah.
Or even celebrating. Like he says. Um so I think we're definitely trying to make it. Urging positive focus.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a recovery.
And do you see it just like from.
Well, I mean, I think it goes on with what Bill was saying. I mean, a lot of times it's it's. Family. Yeah, so. Ryan tends. Why would he thrive in attention?
Exactly, right, Ryan.
The opposite way. A young kid wants, just telling up his dad, trying to get him there at school.
Well, and you've gone. That is.
That was photographs.
Yes, value.
That's a. And where.
Younger kid who, why do I go to school?
All right, so remember that slide I learned, I learned from mistakes. Stakes. Um. I, these principals have so much to share in these buildings, so much going on. I mean, that's why we bring them to the. It's not a good. Update, but thank you. I will next year, as we look at this, give them a half day. But we're going to do, Board, you can go ahead and go back. We're going to do department updates or you can stay focused where you're at. But we're going to have department updates after department updates is a break. So can we get through department updates before break?
Well, Todd.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Lou. Oh, you're all right.
So before we get into department updates, I just, I do want to ask like for all like our principals, the building leadership. Um if you guys can think of like one, one major impactful way that us as a board can support you. Um whether it's like helping you tell your story or um whether it's, you know, looking at some kind of funding or something that it's going to be major, a major impact in your building. You could just think of one area. I'd like to reflect on that a little bit later.
All right, so you heard all about our academic celebrations. Um so I'm going to spend a lot of time. I I just felt like this was a great way for us to kind of talk about some of the wonderful things that are happening after the principals. So as you know, the district um earned a four point five star rating, which according to the state of Ohio exceeds state standards. Super proud of all of the work that everyone in this room does to make sure that our students are learning and growing. Spalding and Goshen High School received the Momentum Award. You don't know what that is? The Momentum Award is for districts and buildings that have demonstrated outstanding improvement and achievement while also continuing to show growth. Momentum Award is for districts and buildings that have improved that performance index by three or more points from twenty-one to twenty-two. So kudos to those buildings um earning that award. GMS was designated as a school to watch by O D E. Mark Hook earned five stars in local report card and Mark Hook preschool earned a five star rating again this year. So um kudos to all of our administrators, our teachers and our. Reorganization of the curriculum team this year, that has um really been interesting and we've gotten a lot done. We have two literacy coaches and I know our buildings have talked about how phenomenal those two people are. I would argue that they're probably more of instructional coaches instead of literacy because they focus on more than just reading and writing. Um Mr. Dubbs has taken over six through twelve curriculum and I put myself as curriculum oversight, even though I'm K through five, because I just can't let it go. Maybe it's a little bit of a control freak in me, but um I just love seeing how. Maybe it's a little bit of a control freak in me, but um, I just love seeing how the learning progression starts in preschool and goes all the way through high school, and so we're a wonderful team that works together. Um, and if I need Danielle Stiles to do something at the high school, she's more than willing to do it, so we really kind of just work together. Um, as you know, we made some instructional shifts in our intervention for math. We have certified Goshen teachers doing math intervention at Spalding, the middle school and the high school. Um, Mark Hook has added added math intervention um, this school year, a little bit towards the end of last year, so I think that's really working really well. UC tutoring program at the high school, um, UC Claremont sends a couple of their students to do some intensive math and ELA tutoring, so that's extra hands on deck. We have that high dosage tutoring grant that we got from ODE, and those tutors are working at Spalding and the middle school, lots of intervention that's happening. Um, and UC and high dosage tutoring is absolutely free for us, so that's another really positive thing to do, anytime you get some free help, we're gonna take it. Um, something that we focus on a lot this year, because pre-COVID, we kind of kind of stopped doing that a lot, was professional learning for our teachers and for our administrators and for our central office team. We joined High Ames this year, which is a big um, collaborative group um, of Hamilton, Warren, Claremont County schools. And so all of the administrators in here participate in either an assistant principal's cohort, a principal's cohort, we have our guidance counselors going, um, Brian attends, I attend, we have all different kinds of groups. And that has been so powerful, because you work on problems of practice. You go there and you say, okay, as a middle school principal, what's something you're struggling with, and they work together. Um, I know Wendy has been able to send some of her teachers to Loveland Middle School, Loveland Middle School's come to Goshen Middle School, great partnership, and we're learning so much from each other. Um, our teachers have gone back to going out to conferences, we were able to send teachers to the Ohio Math Conference, we've sent teachers to the National English Conference. Um, we've sent teachers to a behavior, behavior training called Kid Whisperer. Um, we really very rarely say no, so when they ask, because they wanna learn, we are more than willing to send them, because they're taking that initiative and everyone wants to get better and work on their craft. Uh, literacy, so we have, I know you've heard, lots of intensive reading intervention happening. We kind of charted the numbers, we've had six hundred and thirty nine kids in grades K through five receiving some kind of intervention through title services and project work. So that's outside of what the classroom teachers are doing, that's with our title teachers and the aides that work with them. They're they're really getting specific skills intervention, and then we have tutoring at the middle school and high school. Um, I know they've probably talked about this at the roundtables also, but we've done a lot of in-house intensive staff training as well. Our Mark Hook teachers have, this is their third year of that letters training, that really teaches them how to teach reading and how students learn to read. Um, that's been a really long process, and our teachers have been champions about doing those modules online and service days, they're doing the distance learning PD. Um, so they're finally finishing that this year. Um, our intervention specialists and grade three teachers have done dyslexia training, which is required by the state of Ohio, and Kelsey Ryback did a great job leading those teachers through that. Happy to say they all passed their certification, so we're a hundred percent there. And then um, we do have requirement next year where we all have to go through science of reading training from ODE. So from Brian to all the principals, all of us, all the teachers, even our six through twelve, like, special teachers, so Chris Gregory, Lisa Smith, they have to pass this assessment. So we're working through a plan for for that for the next school year, so stay tuned on that, that's gonna be a interesting process, I think, next year. Some of our challenges, I just wanted to talk about all the initiatives that are coming at us literally all the time, and I just listed from, I go to Hamilton County for curriculum leaders, and they always do a legislative update. And that list was just from one of their legislative updates. We're constantly getting it bombarded with changes from ODE that we have to then go back and implement, and they're sometimes proposed, and then they don't pass, or, so it's kind of, I it feels like sometimes that we are um, changing midstream. And so that's definitely a challenge for all of us in this room, and I alluded to that um, science of reading training earlier, that's gonna be a challenge for us to try to figure out how to get all of our teachers trained in that, and that's kind of that next step. And then um, so you know, one of those changes also deals with discipline issues and testing, and the. Student was expelled for a reason, then their their results didn't count in our our pool of results, and they've changed that. The matter of a student's out for ninety days, we are so responsible for testing them, we're so responsible for those. That may have an impact on our state results in the future, because a student does something where you place them out of school, obviously, it's a very serious concern, so we're trying to figure out how to navigate that. And then as we talk about class sizes, I'm sure the principals have talked to you a little bit about that, as we get new students, our class sizes are going to increase. And so as a person who's responsible for curriculum, it makes me a little nervous, because we're doing really well right now, but you know that's something that will have an impact eventually um, down the road, so I'm gonna keep an eye on our class sizes. Um, we have to add electives also to meet those numbers and needs. Um, so we're, we are going to be adding a STEAM class at Mark Hook and Spalding. STEAM stands for Science Technology Engineering Arts and Math. That's gonna be a new elective, which I think is super exciting for Mark Hook and Spalding. We have a planning day in May where they're gonna sit down with a science content expert to figure out how to kind of support some of the science standards as well as math, and then art and engineering. So I think that's gonna be a really powerful class. We're also adding a business track at the high school, which I'm sure Stephanie talked about earlier as well. Um, honestly, the biggest numbers in our district are six through twelve, so we're preparing to add electives, especially secondary, so that business track will give students the opportunity to um, get their feet wet with business. And hopefully, maybe somebody will become passionate about it, decide that's what they wanna do as a career. And then we are adding an eighth grade teacher, uh, that class is two hundred and forty one students, um, our class sizes are a little large at that group, and just keeping an eye on those numbers, we've decided to add another teacher to that grade level, because we know that that group is a big. So my other hack, um, HR, we have a lot of celebrations in our staffing, it's our seventh year in a row that we've been earned the top workplace designation. And this year we had better engagement than ever before at eighty three percent, which if you look nationwide, we are way above average in that area too, so um, that shows our staff is happy with working here, they're happy with their leadership. Um, and I just wrote down some of the comments for you. So one of the questions is, why would you recommend working at Goshen Local Schools, and I won't read all of them, because I know we're on a time crunch, but I love that, I love some of the things they said, I feel valued here. My pay compared since my previous job is great, my department makes me feel included and valuable, I'm trusted to do my job effectively, communicate with our teachers and community. Um, what contributes most to you wanting to stay in Goshen? Um, I believe in where we're headed, I also feel assured by the superintendent, principals, teachers have high quality, high priority goals for all. I get to write my curriculum, I don't feel like every classroom has to be doing the same lesson at the same time, we're trusted to make curriculum decisions for the demographic of students we have, the students and staff at classes I teach. I love my job because my coworkers are amazing, the community of students and parents I work with are great as well. I honestly have found um, the love, my love for teaching again after coming to Goshen, I love the district is small, I'm very involved in the community and the families we serve. So these are just comments that came directly from that survey, we talked about this a little bit. So obviously in surveys, there is some feedback that, you know, we have to take into consideration too. Besides higher pay, what makes you less likely to leave Goshen Level Schools? And this comes from our non-certified staff, and it talks about how paid time off, you know, if you're a part-time aide, you don't get paid time off. Um, smaller ratios, they said students to professionals, which we know as we grow, that's probably not gonna happen. And then I would love to be able to apply for the same grant that the teachers are able to get financial support, I think they're talking about. Um, but we only offer that to full-time certified. So those are just things to keep in mind. We made a a really strong effort this year to show appreciation to our non-certified staff um, in several different ways. Um, so we're hoping that they feel appreciated and they know how much we value them. The great thing about working in Goshen is we're more than just colleagues, um, we're family. And so as I've started trying to hire new teachers, hopefully you've seen some of those Facebook posts where we're welcoming them to our family, and that's the feedback you get from our staff survey is, it feels like I don't come to work, it feels like I'm I'm hanging out with my family and doing my work, right? So that's one of the great things about working with Goshen. And then the challenges I see this year is, um, nationwide, there is a teacher shortage, I don't know if you've been reading up on that, but as you look, eighty six percent of public schools struggle to hire certified teachers, eighty six percent. And so I could go into a probably an hour lecture of why that's happening right now. Um, but we do, we do have some teachers who are leaving, teaching altogether and going into the business world. We've lost two high school math teachers and intervention specialists to go into business. Um, to be proactive, though, we've posted early, and as you can see, we're already starting our hiring. I didn't wanna wait, we all wanna be proactive in that, and obviously, the sooner you get out looking for employees, the better your pool of applicants. So you'll see a lot of those posts coming, hopefully, the next several weeks. Uh, I hire someone right before the eclipse, we stood out in the parking lot, watched it for a minute, you know, do what you gotta do to get those people in here and hired, so um.
Hey, Teresa, you should talk about the apprenticeship real quickly, teacher apprenticeship.
So I applied um, over Christmas break to work with Franklin University to start a teacher apprenticeship program, which means that we will, it, once it's approved, Goshen will be able to hire a teacher's aide. And also give them a mentor teacher where they're learning to become a teacher. And so it's a grant paid through ODE where they get the tuition at a reduced rate, and it's kind of like a grow your own idea, where we're picking the best of our aides who wanna become teachers and helping them learn the Goshen way of becoming a teacher. Um, and they'll also do their online courses as well, so um, I think we were the first people in Ohio to hear application now with Franklin. Um, we're still waiting for ODE, they, it was Christmas break we submitted, so we keep asking, I literally am asking every week, so hopefully it'll keep us on the radar. Uh, but hopefully we'll get that, we'll get that partnership started, and then I'll sit down and hopefully get it started with our people in August, so.
Phase two that we've looked at, our own students could transition right into that program also.
Yeah, so if you're a high school senior and I wanna become a teacher, we would hire you to be a paraprofessional, you would take your classes with us, you would learn, and then you would, I think it's like three-year program, so you could graduate pretty quickly as well. So that's very exciting, thanks for reminding me of that one. And I'm gonna turn over now to Mr. Slig, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, some teachers, uh, district-wide completed dyslexia training. This will help them to identify kids.
It helps them identify kids, it also helps them work with students that are struggling to read. So it's a lot of that science of reading background, but then also, what does dyslexia look like? What what kind of tools in my toolbox can I use to help students who have dyslexia become better readers?
Thank you. I I actually have one question.
Sure.
Sorry, I forgot I wrote it down there.
It's okay.
So we said, I love that we're giving educators in our administration opportunity to go continue to their education. I mean, we send them to conferences and such, what do they do with that information when they come back? Do they share it out in their building, do they share it out in um.
Yes.
You know, days.
It's part of our professional development packet, they have to say, how are you gonna share this knowledge with your co-teachers, and so that happens at PLCs in the mornings after they've learned. So that's part of their agreement, if we send you out to this conference, you have to come back and share your learning with teachers, and honestly, sometimes that's the best way for other teachers to learn too, because I didn't have to be out of my classroom, but, you know. So and so showed me this thing they learned in fifteen minutes and I can try it.
I was amazed on on the eclipse, the teachers that went out to AI training and came back to train.
Oh, yeah.
What they were doing, I mean, it really is, they put a lot of time into it, getting trained and then coming back and teaching the college.
And then is there the ability to, um, like, are those uh, building to building, like, to share with other, um.
Not as much, but on Monday, what we did was, it was kind of a choose your own adventure AI day, where they could learn from teachers in other buildings, and we get so much positive feedback about that.
Right.
But I try to do that at least one time a year where they can get together and learn from each other. And part of our offerings that day was six through twelve social studies, so they just got together with six through twelve socialized teachers and talked about, I have this resource, you know, what are you struggling with, so those are powerful conversations. We're doing a better job of doing vertical conversations, but I don't say we're an A yet.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Are we sure this time?
We're sure.
Anyone.
I think my face off the screen. Uh, one of my favorite things about this job, twenty years in, is the people in this room. They are smart and emotionally intelligent, but I think most importantly, we're always focused on kids and family and Goshen, all the time. And after twenty years, it is really a joy, no matter how big the problem is, when we sit down to really solve it, everyone's always thinking about, what is best for kids? What is best for this community, what is best for Goshen, for colleagues, and it's just, it's really wonderful. It's it's a joy after twenty years to still feel that way, I'm really thankful for it. I'm gonna go through kind of the ten poles of what my department does and briefly tell you guys which one of these means to me, and then talk about some upcoming initiatives that we're going to be working with as we get into the future. So probably the single most important goal that we all have here is to create a safe and effective learning environment. And you say to me, why are you talking about that during a technology presentation? It's actually almost everything that we are doing in terms of of physical safety and an effective learning environment, it's technology, it really is. I'm just gonna read through a few things, the wired and wireless networks, our intercom building and phone systems, our alert systems for when there are emergencies, door access controls, HVAC systems, surveillance and threat detection systems. All of these things are, one, expensive and complicated and require multiple people who are invested in their success to make them work. And it is a big part of what we're doing every day between Troy, myself, our admin team, our building principals, watching those systems, keeping them ready, keeping them working, because if they're not working, if any one of those components isn't working with the other ones, things can happen, right? And so it's really our responsibility to make sure that our parents and the community know that when our kids walk through these doors, they're going to be safe, and it's a whole lot of technology that's making that happen. We'll talk a little bit more moving into the future about some additional technology that's gonna make it even better, but I'm proud of where we are on that. Another big safety component is digital safety. We are putting devices in the hands of our students and sending them home with them. We, I think, are professionally and ethically obligated to make sure that they are as safe as we can make them while they're in that environment. And we take it really seriously, and we have some really good systems in place to help with that. The big one that you guys, the community members, are gonna see is security. What securely does is, it lets us first say what isn't, is not safe for a kid at a grade level, and we watch it all the time. We monitor our traffic, and if we start to see certain terms come up, then we go, we get alerts if a kid is talking about self-harm. If a kid is talking about situations at home that would cut any of us as parents to say, I need to go find out what that is, we go find out what that is, and then we communicate with the kid and the family when necessary to make sure that they're safe. What we also do, though, is we say, I saw a search that was about a drug. Was it an eleventh grader who was in a health class, or was it a third grader, right, and to kind of differentiate based on what that looks like. And securely is an area where I think that we do a really good job being proactive to make sure that our students are safe, and that we're always watching to make sure that it's okay. Another really big one there is cybersecurity. We work with HCC, who is our internet service and kind of everything else provider, and they have a professional cybersecurity consultancy group that I meet with about once a week, and we look at everything. Because a big part of this job is, are our kids safe, right, but also is our sensitive data safe? Is the information that we have that's inside of our walls and inside of our computers, is it, can you hack it, right? Are we making sure that our information about our students, their demographics, their personal information, their parents, their families, is all that stuff safe within kind of the walls of what we're doing here? And our cybersecurity consultancy really makes that, makes that go for us. Equitable access is something that I'm pretty passionate about. Technology is expensive, and there is real potential for a learning and experience gap to develop. If we as a school district are not committed to making sure that the technology, devices and services and training that we put in front of our kids is the same technology that is available to them at other school districts around this area. And if it's not the same, we're really doing them a disservice, and I'm really happy and proud to work at a place where we really are committed to that, you see it all the time. I'm gonna read through some things, student computers, classroom technology, our infrastructure, our technology education offerings. Now we're talking about, what are we giving the kids to make sure that when they walk out of here, they're prepared to go out there into the world? STEAM and STEM at pretty much all grade levels these days, right down to Mark Hook, we're doing it. The Oaks Engineering programs at the middle school and the high school, we have IT certification paths at the high school, we have content creation classes, which is, the kids love it, and they think they're having fun, but they're learning incredibly valuable technology skills that they'll use once they're out there into the world. There's video production, there's social networking going on. that they'll use once they're out there into the world. There's video production, there's social networking going on. We had a situation earlier this school year that was really interesting where we had a kind of a staff workday. And we were floating through the groups and Mr. Bailey ended up in a conversation with some high school teachers. And one or two of the high school teachers was showing them how they take out their iPad and they airplay up to the TVs and they get out their Apple pencil, and then they basically have like the old-school turnaround and write on the whiteboard, which is kind of difficult to accomplish with these cards on wheels, right there in their hands. And a couple of the other guys said, man, I wish I could do that. And then I got a text from Brian and he was like, reach out to your Apple rep, what does that look like to outfit all of our science department people? Like an iPad so that they can do that. It's really a really effective model. Inside of a week, we had all of our science teams at the middle school and the high school outfit it for not very much money so that they're all right on the same page, just because one or two of them showed a really effective model. And we turned right around and we said, you know what? Yes, our kids deserve this, let's make it happen. And we made it happen. It's been really great. Department management, this one's boring, but it's important. Are we staffing appropriately? Are we following best practices? Are we cooperating here locally with our team, but also with other school districts to make sure that we are kind of on at least the correct edge, not the bleeding cutting edge, right? But the correct edge of what our policies look like, so that we're making good decisions. Custom tools is really fun. It's probably the other best thing about my job. If we need something that doesn't exist, we make it. It's really cool. There are kind of two ways that goes. One of the ways is that one of these guys comes to me and they say, hey, we want to be able to do this thing and we can't find the thing to do it. And so we, okay, and then we just build it. We build a website or a web portal, whatever we're doing. The other really fun way that happens is I sit in a meeting and like I just hear a problem and I chew on it and I think, actually, I think that we can solve that. And then I go to them and I say, hey, I have an idea. What do you think about working together and solving this? And if it's worth our time, we do it. And it costs me my time and you guys nothing. So it's really a fun way to build and distribute really cool things. We could probably name 15 or 20 that we use right now. It's so much fun. Another big one for me is communication. This is a bit twofold. One, I administer all of the applications that we communicate to the community with. So that's, Thrill Share, Kimbo, InformaCast, Smore, Final forms, physical media. And I could just keep reading, but it gets boring pretty fast, right? But the point, I think, is that we have to be able to effectively communicate a whole array of information. One, if we have a program in place and you, the parent or community, want to know what that's about, you need to be able to go to our website or go to one of us and get that information quickly. But two, we need to be able to communicate that sort of just-in-time information to you. Say, hey, don't be late for the bus, right? Or, hey, this is due on this day. Or, hey, this scholarship opportunity exists for your kids at this place. And all of those communications are really a technology department component that are really, really important. So inside of those, there we go. I'm gonna talk a bit about next steps with some of these. Physical safety, this one's really interesting. So we use a program called InformaCast. And what InformaCast does, it sits on the internet and it ties together our phones, our speaker systems and all of our messaging systems to allow us to say, if there's a problem, what is the problem and who needs to be informed? So like if it's a fire drill, right, then only people inside the district need to be informed. Maybe the fire department so they know that that's not a real alarm, you don't have to send a fire truck. And then we move forward from there. If it's something like a real emergency, an intruder or something like that, then we need to be able to instantly alert every teacher, every principal, our school safety resource officers, local dispatch, all these people. And we can do all those things with a couple of taps on our phones. So we have sort of an array of different types of scenarios that might come up. And we say, what's the scenario? Where's it happening? Go. And it does all the communication work for us so that we can get on with the important tasks of actually making sure people are safe where they need to be, right? InformaCast is really, really good for that. We are adding kind of the next steps of integration. It's mostly Mr. Smith and I. And then getting in with principals, what's actually in place of fully integrating InformaCast. And what that looks like is things like this. Automated monitoring of any 911 call that goes out of this school district. Patching in the correct people if 911 call does take place. Integration with our fire and tornado drills and alarms. If you pull a fire alarm on the wall, InformaCast knows it and communicates. If you get on InformaCast and say, I see a fire, the fire system knows it, launches itself and communicates, right? Then there is a piece called Visitor Aware. And this is brand new. I'm gonna tell you about it and then I'm gonna run a short video. But I think it's important you have context for what you see in the video, right? So Visitor Aware is a bunch of things. Some of it is replacing things that we're already paying for. So we're gonna be able to say, navigate 360, pick my kid. There's one more big one in there, I blanked on it, sorry, that we are currently paying for. We'll be able to wipe away those bills and fold it into their Visitor Aware system so that we can run it through there. It's great. It's automatic. It's updated every day, right through progress book. It's gonna be really, really good. The new thing that Visitor Aware does is this. Smart Pass, that's what it was, yep. There's a system called Smart Pass where if the kid leaves the classroom, we need to know, where's the kid going? How long was he in the hall? What time did he show back up? It monitors all this, okay? So the big, big thing about Visitor Aware that got us on this path was, people come in and out of our buildings all the time, right? They walk into the front, you push the buzzer, somebody looks through the grass, they might say, can I help you? And then we let them in and we see what's going on. Visitor Aware lets us track all that stuff. It also adds a front end to getting into the buildings. It's really impressive. Next school year, when you come into one of our foyers, the locked-down area that is between the outside and actually getting into the office, there'll be an iPad there on a stand. You will come up to it and the first time you do that thing, you will swipe your ID, your driver's license, and it'll put you into the system and know who you are. It'll compare your identity with the names and identities of the people who are okay inside of progress book to pick up a kid. So it knows that. It'll snap your picture. Every other time you come into the building, you'll walk up and you'll just say, hey, I'm here for a pickup. It'll take your picture, detect who you are, because it knows now, and it will tell the person who's in the front office who you are. When that happens and you try to get in, it will also compare your identity against, I think, FBI and BCI background check and sexual predator lists and any red flags that we, as a school district, have put into the system to say, hey, let me know if this particular parent shows up, I'd like to talk to them. Or let me know if this parent shows up, they've got a custody issue going on. We'll be able to integrate all of those things so that our kids are gonna be safer than they have ever been because we're monitoring each time somebody tries to get into the building, what is their intent. Also then lets us track important things logistically, like how many times did this student check out during the school year? How many hours of school were missed during that time? What were the reasons for all those times that you kept on moving in and out of school? Makes sense?
Yeah.
That's what Visitor Aware looks like. I'm not sure you even need the video at this point, but I'm gonna play it.
Visitor Aware with Single Wire software helps schools effectively manage visitors, volunteers and students. When visitors enter a school building, they're ID's scanned using encrypted facial recognition technology against sex offender registries, government watch lists and legal injunctions. The facial recognition and the use of QR codes streamlines the check-in process and reduces the number of false positives during screening. It requires zero proprietary hardware, so there's no need for schools to spend extra money on things like printers and tablets. Visitor Aware is more than just a digital test book. Schools can also leverage it to manage volunteers, record chartered students, streamline student pickup, account for students during an emergency and help reunify them with legal guardians afterward. These benefits are campus-wide, so they can be utilized at multiple bill. Visitor Aware from Single Wire software helps.
We'll cut her off.
Visitor Aware from Single Wire Soft.
Can do it. Hey, all right. I know that was a big one. I'm gonna stop and ask if you guys have any questions on that right now.
What are we integrating? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Corey.
As I was saying, what are we integrating on buses? I think that's a very vulnerable time when our kids are on the buses. So, you know, what are we putting on buses as far as, you know, because like on the baseball or basketball or football, sometimes the parents will take them right from, you know, and right now it's just a checklist. You know, the coaches are checking it off. What are we doing on the buses to make sure that we're accounting for those students, the safety of those students?
So actually, Corey, there are new guidelines that have come out from Governor DeWine this fall in reference to buses. Not guidelines, recommendations. I have met extensively with the bus garage and run to multiple things, of which one is safety. And we have discussed and we are looking at various things that are on those buses electronically, as Mark is referring to, technology-wise, a lot of things. And that can be anything from the electronic checkout process where things are located on an iPad on a bus and that bus listens on that iPad, all the way down to a panic button. So if heaven forbid something happened to that bus, there's an automatic, kind of like under-the-counter type of, that the bus driver would hit immediately notifying, because they're not allowed, obviously, or could not be accessible to a cell phone. But that would notify authorities, et cetera. So those are things that are in conversation and being processed. It's a great question. Because safety is in school buses, just like classrooms.
I know that would have to go through, you know, through the other company, I mean, yes, how they would, yes? That's what this is.
Okay. I was like, wait. I absolutely love this. I think I felt great about every school in our district having the two entrances, right? I have to say, Spalding does an exceptional job of like not letting someone in. And maybe it was just because I was there during COVID, but I love that. I love that there's this like question, we're not just gonna let you in. Even, and I always say this, like, I don't want to be treated any differently because I'm a board member. I want to be treated like an everyday parent everywhere that I am, when I'm here as a parent. And I love that security of the double door. And now I love this security of us not even letting them in the office.
Let me describe to you what happens. It's fascinating, yeah. If you walk up to that kiosk and try to get in, and you, for any of the reasons we described, are not supposed to get in, the system pops up a box and it essentially says, I'm having a technical problem. That's what it says. But in the background, the principals get a text message, our SROs get a text message, and everyone says, this person at this building right now is on site trying to get in and they don't belong there. And here they come. It's really.
Ah, we'll tell you. As we initiate this next year, we're customer, I want our parents to feel welcome.
Yeah.
So we probably will start this in the office, as a man, walk them through the process so that it's not. I want them to have their license in probably the first couple of weeks and then we'll fully implement. But, you know, that's the one thing about schools, you want to be welcoming.
You do, but as a parent too, in this day and age, like honestly, I don't want just anyone walking in on the building right into the office.
We're gonna have to train a little bit, I guess.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden, like the wonderful ladies that work at the front desk of our office are vulnerable. And reality is, is there's entry and exit points once you get through those double doors, right? And keeping our kids safe is, is keeping our kids and our teachers and our staff and our principals and everybody safe is, should be super important for us or is super important for us. Secondary to that is thinking through this, and obviously, this is not an answer read today. This is like a, we'll have to think through. We do wonderful things like student of the month celebrations where people come in, right, and JHS introductions, inductions, where we have multiple parents come in at one time. I have, I have to say, I've never felt unsafe, but there's definitely times where we kind of open the doors and I'd like to think through that system of, how do we get people in? Is it multiple iPads up there for those kind of things so that we can get more people in in a quick manner? But we are still monitoring who comes in our building during those times, right? Because they're, they're vulnerable opportunities.
You know, we're not inventing this wheel, right? So I'll ask our people during implementation, what is best practice versus a situation like that? And they'll hopefully give us some good consultancy there.
Thank you.
What about like, to your point, sporting events and stuff like that? Is it gonna be, like, are we monitoring it so much like after schools or just during school?
Just during the school.
I think when we have our whole district in.
I like that.
So you answered the one question already with the red flag, what happens when I mentioned the red flag. The other one, the information system, District Y. So is that cellular system or is it with our networks? What happens when our networks go down?
Are we talking in terms of communication?
That's it.
In terms of how does it communicate?
The automated communication system. What, either, the first one you spoke about, was that InformaCast?
Yeah.
And then, yeah, so.
So the answer is kind of yes. It works like this. One, there are messages inside the apps that are installed on the appropriate people's cell phones. It also goes directly to their email. It also goes via text message. So it would take multiple layers of technologies failing that basically doesn't happen for the communication not to get out. If anything, under normal circumstances, it's annoying because it tells you four times, right? But it's gonna hit you, no matter.
Good, good.
Do all teachers and staff have InformaCast on their phones or is it administration only?
All teachers and staff get communications from InformaCast. Only administrators who need to launch certain scenarios.
Right, so like for reporting purposes such, like if they see something in the building, would a teacher have that?
Right now, they're using Navigate Prepared and that's the one that InformaCast forward placed. Eventually, for next year or yes, they will have that.
Yeah, they will be able to report using that.
Yeah, I love all of the total capabilities. The first thing I think of is just like for our littlest kids that pick up as, you know, that don't know who's supposed to pick them up. So I love that. For that most of all, you know, like if somebody's gonna pick them up and they're not the right person, so.
I imagine we're working with local law enforcement, like they're integrated into this type of stuff, right?
Next, great. So equitable access, really what we're here to talk about is student computers, because that is our big kind of ongoing task. I mean, there was a time when computers were a luxury and now they're paper and pencil and books. You just absolutely have to have them. And our goal is to put a quality working computer that is running the current operating system. I say that very specifically because if you can't guarantee that, then you can't guarantee that when it's time to do something like testing, we can get them what they need, right? So it's really important they can run that current operating system. And our goal is to make sure that all of our kids have access to that and it meets their needs and their teachers' needs. What you're looking at here is a chart that I won't belabor too much, but what it is telling you essentially is what, that doesn't work very well, what kinds of computers we have in the district right now, how many of that kind of computer is at each building, what the total on that is. And then the important one I hear is the end-of-life for that computer type. So we project a certain amount of time which these computers will last, of course. And then we have to be able to have a plan that says, okay, what is our upgrade or refresh cycle for that particular kind of? And so as you look through there on the far right, you see that we know roughly when that particular computer is going to go out of service. And then we need to refresh the fleet, get new ones in and retire those. And you might say to me, well, why don't you just wait until it dies and then do it then? And the answer is because it's incredibly unpredictable. And if one or two of them die, probably they're all getting close to the point where that's gonna start happening. And that is not a sustainable model for making sure that we have excellent working condition computers that are out there and that are reliable for our teachers and our students and their families. So we plan ahead to make sure we know what we're doing. So what you are looking at here is where we think we stand with refresh to that reset, refresh cycle on our student Chromebooks year over year. Couple of really important things here. Thing one, you see this summer, next summer, it just says upkeep. That's because we don't have any computers in our fleet right now that are scheduled for a refresh until out here into the summer of 2026. So when you see upkeep, what that means is, we look at our fleet at the end of the year. We say, all right, we know we put one in every kid's hands. And then we like to have approximately 10% surplus on our shelves to make sure that no matter what happens, we're always gonna be able to say to your students when they show up, oh, you have a problem? Here's your computer for the day. We'll get that fixed for you. You'd be surprised, some days it's two and some days it's 50. It's really, really fluctuating. It's maybe full moons, we don't really know. But we do try to have 10% surplus on the shelves. When you see a dollar amount right here, that is us replacing the computers that we know are heading out of service at that point. So it's based entirely on what our current enrollment looks like, no projected growth there. And then $250 per unit is a pro- And then $250 per unit is approximately what we paid last time. I say all that to say, that number is our best guess based on what we know today. If enrollment goes up, of course, you have to buy more computers for each one of those kids. We all know the prices tend not to go up. So we have to keep an eye on that number two. But the point is we're planning out and saying year over year, 2026, 2027, 2028, we see a certain number of these machines having to go into life and be replaced so we can provide computers for our kids. And then we enter another upkeep cycle where we're just looking and making sure our fleet's ready for the next year. And then these machines out here in 2031, we start to see those go into life. So we refresh and we keep that cycle going. Any questions on that?
They can, they can purchase insurance or is that how that works? Like, how responsible are the students for the damages or anything?
I mean, that's a good question and it's one that we kind of work at all the time trying to keep an eye on what our needs are. How did the damage take place, right? Was there intent with respect to the damage? And so our, generally I would say that the answer is this, when there is an issue with a broken Chromebook, we speak with our administrators, we look at what the cause of that damage was, and then we make a decision as a team on whether or not to charge that student.
I just know from personal experience, no one put his behind his mom's tire. She didn't know it so quickly that she didn't offer it.
So he had offered insurance policies that weren't very, not very lucrative. Not many people took up on it, but it's there.
So $250 per unit is great price. And we put the same device in every kid's hand regardless if they come from the most fortunate home or least fortunate home, we're funding them. So we know that all kids are at the same level in terms of opportunity to learn. I know other, some other school districts, kids pay or rent or, you know, and so I love that the community we live in, all the kids are put on the same playing field. Thanks for your nice work on that.
Still get grants occasionally to pay for the, you offset costs.
That's actually a really good question and a point that I meant to bring up. We do have those projected spend cycles out there, but you will also, if you look at our last spend cycle, we are constantly keeping an eye out for opportunities, whether it's grants or government programs, to offset those costs. And several of these previous spends, they actually were accomplished, whether it's it's Ezra funds, money that came down from COVID.
Some of that based on the economic needs of our community, also based on our, or no, it's pretty much just filling out the grant, it's awarded, it's not based on our, our population.
We get a certain amount for the.
For technology.
Yeah, there are certainly, yeah, there are services where we do, our computer spend set, that is not the case. It's always true for things like networking, right? Some of that stuff.
That's great. That goes.
I'm sure it helps when applying for a grant though to say, we have X amount of students living in poverty who wouldn't be able to afford.
So like you said, it's like essentially the same as the pencil and paper now or, you know, nowadays it's essential. Do the other schools in our community, do, do they not have the right computers to take home for all of their students?
I think that there was a time when it was a little, COVID really changed that.
Yeah.
We before COVID were very much already on the path of understanding that this is an important part of creating equity for our kids. So we were already doing it, but COVID forced everyone into this kind of path.
I don't know. I know we're going to talk about this in the future, so I don't know if that's something that maybe we should talk about as something as a, you know, so the community knows that this is something that our students have, you know? I guess there'd be some people who, and then community who would say, boy, gosh, it's ridiculous that we're giving our students a computer, you know? They just need, you know, my day, we only had a pencil and paper, so why do they need us, you know, students so they would maybe feel that we were mismanaging the money by providing computers? But I didn't know that's something maybe that we should.
It is definitely true that in communities that neighbor ours, the students have computers, but they are charged upwards of $300, $400. I don't have a slide for the last one, but it is communication and I bring it up simply because it is really important. It is one of the, I think, either greatest successes or ongoing points of frustration for parents and our students' families. And so we are just always making sure that we are trying to refine and improve that. Okay. Questions for me?
Can we still offer wireless hotspots to families who may not pay off internet help?
Those were funded through a grant with Verizon and that funding has since expired and they no longer.
We boosted our outdoor so they can come up to any parking lot.
Right.
Get internet.
Which that kind of goes with what we're talking about right now, right? How many people in our community know that we are bathing our, our parking lots in wifi if they need it? We need to do a better job of communicating that.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Mr. Dove.
I do because I drop off and pick up line, I work all the time.
Yeah, when I pick up, I'm usually working at the same time too.
All right, I didn't do this opening frame, I don't know who put it together, and Randy's sitting over there, he's a guff. Yes, I don't see as well and I am grayer.
I thought it was a fantastic picture. And you looked well rested.
Yeah, so I'm going to work on getting, I guess, a more up-to-date picture. But I don't want to be a beauty that's sitting here during that free. That's your AI fiction. There you go.
Mark, Mark loves to take photos, so just, just find him.
Before you come to GoShine. But I really don't think this is contributing like this in the last couple of years of advancing.
Mark, you have a new initiative now. He needs a photo or ten.
So I would say this about when it comes to college career readiness. We, we clearly are a leading district when it comes to being future ready. How do I know that? I know that because of the volume of communications I get from other schools. That call or email or stop me at meetings and ask me, why are you doing this? How are you doing this? What are you doing? And there, there's a lot of that. And so that tells me that people want to know what we're doing here at GoShine. And, and, and what I kind of shaped this little presentation about or use kind of my umbrella is that we've been asked to do a couple of presentations. And so earlier RA this year, I went to OU Ironton to the GRIT conference and did a presentation. The link's there if you're interested in looking at that particular PowerPoint. But I talked about it that one about how we do a PK-12 approach and we literally are one of the few school districts that are doing PK-12. And I know without a doubt that you, you heard parts of that as you listened to each of the principals, they were talking about the things that we do with, in future ready. I meet weekly with Stephanie and Randy and Chuck. I meet monthly with the other buildings and we constantly are talking about, okay, what's coming up this month? What do we need to do or what help do you need? I, I even go and sit with the pack and talk to, talk to parents over at, at Mark Cook to give them an idea of what's going on. So we are doing a great job of, of a PK-12 approach, one of the few districts doing that. We'll keep refining that, we'll keep trying to get better at that. But, but that was one of the presentations. And then we've been asked to do a presentation in May. And the theme that they wanted us to talk about was what are some realistic and meaningful ways to create career education for secondary students? And within that, we'll create a, we'll create a PowerPoint or a presentation. It really kind of looks at two things. And the one is, that's really key, is partnerships. Partnerships are so, so, so important. And we have partnerships with every one of those type of entities. We have partnerships with colleges and universities, we have business partnerships, trade associations, nonprofits, education associations, and even government agencies that we're working with. So those partnerships are really, really important because they lead to so many other opportunities for us. And then the other thing is that it's, it's so important just to take the resources we already have and trying to be creative and trying to, and trying to use those. Now, everybody made fun of this, of this one here, and I by no means do I expect to read all that, but you can see it when you go back. But I know Stephanie talked about GRIT and we do the assessment, we do the coaching. This is an example of how that partnership leads to another thing. So we have this summer the opportunity to, to send our kids what's called Bear Tracks. It's at Shawnee State University and it's a residential program based for seniors first and then juniors. And actually on that number there, I put that we had six kids, we actually picked up three more kids since we actually put this frame together. So we got nine kids that are going to go to Shawnee State University this summer for a two to three week program. It's totally free. There's a scholarship for the kids to go, they stay, they can come out of there and you can see the different areas that, that they can get a credential or they can even get college credit. And it's just an amazing opportunity and that partnership just resonates. And the only thing we need to do is, we need to make sure that our kids have taken the GRIT assessment. And because what they do is, and that's a win-win because what GRIT does is they get, they're, they're actually a line item budget wise, they take the data, the aggregate data of what those, of how many kids go through that process of taking that assessment and the coaching, then they're able then to justify their grant money and their funding and so forth. But if our kids complete that, then they're able to apply and then be able to go to Shawnee State University for that two to three week program and do that. Fantastic opportunity for, for our kids. Another thing, and this is the second part of the presentation that, that we'll do for high schools at work, is just taking what you already have and being creative about it. And I think that, you know, board members have seen this at various times, but GNN was an absolute jewel for us. And right away, I think part of, because my office over in the media center, I like right away kind of latched on to this idea that, hey, we got these kids that can do all this media stuff for us. And then we started giving them more and more opportunities to do videos and focuses for, for different things. And it's even for over at Mark Cook with, with My First Career and all those type of things. But this, because our kids are doing so many amazing things and working like the Home Builders Association, Home Around and so forth, it caught the attention here in Claremont County of Connect Claremont. And so they came out, they sat down and talked to us, they're wanting our kids to start doing news for all of Claremont County. And so we're really excited and we know we're going to take some baby steps. So it's, it's not as easy as it sounds, but they have put together a content creators collaborative, it's going to be a seminar for our kids. We, right now, we've got 30 plus kids that are ready to go to, to do this next month. And, and the, the people, the itinerary of who's coming is really amazing. I mean, you have people from Scripps Howard, from Sensei Enquirer, all kinds of different media people are going to come and they're going to work with our kids for that day and give them a taste of what it is professionally. And actually, I went to an event earlier this week to kind of represent the school district and one of the leaders from Scripps Howard was there. And I told him we had 30 plus kids that were wanting to come to this event and he was like, he was stunned. He goes, are you kidding me? And I said, yeah, we've got 30 some kids. And of course, his thing was, he goes, he goes, if only one kid becomes a professional journalist out of that 30, he said, still those other 29 or 30 plus, that's still so meaningful because they learn lots of different professional and career skills. So that's an example of some things that we will talk about. All right, if you want to stay up to date, I say this all the time, but if you want to know what's happening in, in real time, what's going on in the district when it comes to college, just, just every Wednesday, take a look at the newsletter. I know sometimes it's long and so forth and I will tell you that the other thing is that it's a repository of things. I cannot tell you how many times kids will come in and say, hey, tell me about this. And I'll go, okay, let's go back through a, a previous edition of Where2 and they've got a whole little paragraph or passage and all the links and all the contacts and stuff. So we kind of do it twofold, but if you want to stay up to date to what we're doing, just take a look at that every, every week because we are religious about putting that out there and getting everything that's in there. And then the, the final thing I would put is that we also, I think, are, are really starting to do a strong, make a strong effort to put articles that, what we're doing in the, in the Claremont Sun. So we send them pictures and articles all the time. And then I know it came up during the rotations that, you know, some of the things we were doing. So I, we created a Google sheet because I was going to print it off and the font got so small, it's kind of hard to read. But that'll be on your, on your PowerPoint, you can click on and that'll open up an entire document that's showing every single CCR thing that we're doing, the number of, of kids, participants, a little description and all. And we really need to do that also, learn lessons as you kind of go. We, we also need that as we apply for the, the BAC award and all that kind of stuff because I had to kind of do that on the fly. And so we thought, hey, let's keep this some kind of a running thing going so we don't have to, to try to go back and try to figure that out. But that's, that's just some of the things we're doing at CCR. And I, I didn't have a lot of frames because you heard hopefully lots of it as you were listening to each building. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any interest at GoShine in starting an ROTC program here or?
You know, we've, we've, we've talked a little bit about that, you know, and we've had some kids who have came and talked to us and of course, you know, our first answer is that the Oaks has, has that program. But I don't know if we've seen that kind of numbers yet for ROTC, but I mean, we have had some internal discussions about it.
I just, I just had an email from a recruiter asking me to sit down and talk with him and I communicated with Brian about that. I want to hear what he has to say. I want to hear about cost factors too, because that obviously comes into play. But as Brian and I said, this is a community that certainly supports anything military, so it's worthy of having a conversation to hear what they have to say because we do have many GoShine kids. I think about Alex Bonnell as one that, that soars when it comes to the ROTC and, but again, it's, it's something that we're continuously happy.
With the, the program at the Oaks, what we just said, 20 kids gets full scholarships. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's amazing. And a good friend of mine has signed up for a program at Lebanon, he went to college, paid for, I believe with an ROTC program. Gets another opportunity to pay for college too.
To go hand in hand with that, I recently had a student ask me about FFA and I encourage them to reach out to you, right? And discuss their interest in that or starting a, a club or whatever it looks like. So is that the method students should go if they're interested or?
Probably, and what we might even want to do rather than go full pledge FFA because that's, that's a pretty big step and you got to get inside of it. But the 4H here in, in Claremont County and even neighboring in Brown Cass, I can't do it regional, they have reached out, talked to us about doing some things so we could probably opportunities, a, a club type of thing for that.
Well, that was the last few weeks, so I think it was over spring break, so someone might reach out to you.
Make note of that.
Do you have any school, any districts like partner up for a program like FFA?
Well, I mean, the closest, the closest we Blan, I think, I think.
Sandy has an FFA, Blanchester has an FFA, Felicity has an FFA. Those are the ones that I know of.
Felicity is fantastic.
Felicity is national.
Word is not, yeah, that's a national.
It's a national piece.
I like the idea though, even like a 4H.
I do too.
Opportunity.
Might be got contacts with 4H this weekend, we can talk about that.
Guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Just want to thank you for the opportunity. A lot of the conversations you heard with your administration, they, a lot of times the things that I'm working with and working on with staff as well as administration, as well as parents in the community, they've had a ton of conversations already. So I can see them at various levels of need, concern for. And so I want to talk about a few things that prior conversations have led us to be able to implement and through approval and the vision of administration of the board, putting these things in motion. I'm happy to share out with you a few statistics and items in that regard. And I'll start out with our family engagement specialist data and review those that you have. And I think that the biggest thing I'd like to share with regard to that and the data that you see there, connecting home to school is very natural for a lot of us. It's just who we are, it's what we do, it's, it's our level of involvement. us it's just who we are it's what we do it's it's our level of involvement that exists and it's just a part of who we are there are those that that's not a natural environment they have some sort of school experience that requires a little bit of.
Tom backup one I think you jumped to you're not on the family engagement specialist.
Oh I did get ahead of myself alright so I'll start with the family engagement thank you so there are various levels of need and support in the processes our family engagement specialist receives referrals through administration through guidance counselors and teachers on various levels of things that are educated that are various education that as much as our administration and counselors want and need and want to help with that there's just an opportunity that needs to be put the hands together of a community resource and that parent and help them link arms and move forward from that process from attendance to mental health to eyeglasses basically Christmas help holiday care baskets winter coats and just support for the health source of Ohio and there so that's been our family engagement specialist the resource coordinator been a great resource in helping with some of those things that keep our administrators in the past typically up at night going okay I want to make sure I can get to that but I don't know that I there's not enough of me not enough of my assistants or enough of our resources that will allow that and that's what this helps to help support. Mental health supports we all know that a healthy mind is a foundation of success a young person that's surrounded by that community of support is going to be what we are surrounded by the opportunity to fail forward the opportunity to learn in a healthy and safety safe environment and we certainly are able to do well with that our mental health supports you heard your your building administrators talking about this we have catalysts we have child focus they've seen two hundred and seventy-nine referrals this year there's two child focused staff supporting our buildings for catalyst and you've heard that they're looking to do additional more there mental health therapist that's Mr. Turpining he has got a hundred and thirty-six students that he's helped support he has reached out to the middle school there's Hope Squad that is an item that's worked on freshman bridge program and then outreach through our national night out and then summer rec league which he runs at the conclusion that if you're interested in a pickup game of basketball over at one of the gyms which everyone happens to be open whenever the schedule those kids are very competitive so I know that firsthand so with that the the next thing that it is Ohio Legislative Initiative this is Ohio Law Saves Act Aaron's Law implementation we have really focused on meeting the requirements and this is not something that was optional we could not opt out of this it wasn't something we had to face it we had to address it and we were very intentional and we spent a great deal of time reviewing iterations of what we might want to provide looking at it all lenses of importance and recognizing and supporting that our community and our parents I'm a parent you're a parent we're all parents and we all have kids and we are engaged in we have a comfort a level of comfort with the material that's there and and so we've been intentional with making sure that in our rolling that out we were communicated that probably ad nauseam we had one prior to spring break we had one as soon as we returned we had one last evening and we we are respecting parents that want to opt their child out that's certainly their their right certainly can do that we're at about four percent I don't know what to expect as far as the number of parents or those who don't want to be a part of it but that's where we're at I've heard the question too if we haven't been able to review how do we opt out come in review it and then opt out that opt out hasn't doesn't stop we're just gonna start implementing here soon so you know a parent comes and looks at it says no that's my job at home or you know whatever we gave an opportunity it's still there so they've got time still our our staff has worked very hard to make sure that that the content that they're using is is very appropriate and it's not you know very well done.
If they want to come in review they should come in the board office.
We've set times and that's been communicated so yes all the materials are at the board office. Yep okay. And I'll go back so our facility dogs they're not just cute they're pretty cute but they're a critical part to creating kind of a stress-free environment for our students you can see what their activity has been at the at the building level we started a few years back with Meg Meg is a star continues to be a star Artis has taken over and he is he is an absolute great dog and I know he's out here each morning gets to greet and serve as an ambassador his role has opened up and then the newest star on the on the on the role is Roland and and there's some smiles from the ball.
He thinks their dog is the cutest it's like a competition between all of them.
But Roland is.
Yeah.
He is he's go see him if you get the chance I'll tell you they're all great absolutely hundred percent his internship we're getting close to the end of it.
Next week is the graduation.
He has he's knocked it out of the park and he'll become a part of the staff pretty soon and then so kind of moving forward and looking forward in in my recent conversations with our provider of that they have already assigned next year's dogs one school is actually one district is adopting four of them and so that leaves us with we would even be looking at twenty-five twenty-six before we implement that and they sort of asked about what about the where are the littles and and my their response was we don't do the little we're not we don't go to the K-two level yet with the kids there's a lot of things that they still need to research and study on what the response is because I remember my kids when they were K-one-two they see a dog and everything else went out they were the ball and the pop that anymore they were going right for those dogs so before they would start looking at considering us for that they want to make sure they see what those causes are so I can see situations where Meg Artis and Roland become ambassadors and have visits and we're getting information on that so next is the school-based health care center the information on that year in review can't believe we're coming up on a year since it's been implemented we're at two hundred and fifty dental exams two hundred and seventy-four eye exams seventy-four pair classes that receive six hundred and ninety-seven care visits by school age patients during the twenty-three twenty-four school year can't say enough about what that perhaps provides and supports with regard to a child who may not have the same experiences in healthcare and the I think the legacy that that provides for that kid to understand that preventative care is.
Yeah.
Good care.
Healthy kids learn better.
Wow that's good thank you Tom.
Yep.
Yeah.
Last one Mr. Smith.
Yeah so you guys can ask questions I'm sorry.
So just quick question is you know mental health is super important and happy and healthy kids in our school system learning well Governor Dewine last week sent out a push for us to ask for schools to look at cell phone usage policies in districts and I think this is becoming a hot topic but I think we've all been very aware of the impact that cell phones and just media have on our children and let's get real adults lives and the way we live in today so is is this something that we are monitoring we are thinking about in terms of like the mental health state of our schools?
So familiar with what you're talking about with regard to Senator Dewine putting or not Senator Governor yeah Governor Dewine and this supporting a ban certainly something we wouldn't want to look at I know our buildings have various levels of support in that right now and that students can put them up into calculator cases and supporting to that probably one of the first discussions if 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 that's what you would like for us to do is begin kind of looking at where we're seeing the highlights of of that particular process and kind of what that might look like for us so.
We've done parent surveys things like that in the past so I was digging into that that's something that's on our radar for a while.
Yeah so it's kind of I mean it's.
It's something we'll keep looking yeah we'll keep looking at that because you know obviously if there's legislation follow the rules.
Right right.
Um I do speak about one of our members working in the first of all what's the test the kids take in high school and it kind of throws up red flags they're suicide.
Yeah.
But it what is that?
Signs of suicide.
Signs of suicide yeah yeah so there was somebody had contacted me speaking person this was I can't remember the beginning of this year or what but they did say that he spoke to me and said his son swiped it he just he wanted to thank me tell the rest of you guys thank you all for this was available for the kids he had no idea he neither parent had any idea that this kid was at risk the mother even suffers from night poor disorder and you you'd think that you know and and the father told me he said you know where is what my wife suffers with you'd be fully aware and look and know signs but it got passed him but that caught it and then he speaks so highly of Mr. Turpining yeah and he was he was cool wow and he said he had no idea it worked it was pretty emotional I mean because you'd think somebody you'd think that they would even because of what his wife suffers from but the boy's mom suffers from it yeah she's kind of an expert in the field I mean she considered somewhat of an expert.
I think what the interesting thing about that is 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 data-wise ninety-seven students of two classes freshmen and juniors were targeted targeted wrong weren't identified identifying flagged as at a minimum of being able to talk with a mental health support person for one or multiple sessions and contacting parents with that so it's really important and I and I think also what it does do is it identifies people students individuals that that you would never know and it sounds like maybe that that situation may have been evident there but but as an administrator of of somebody that knows our kids I think that is the beauty of a student that that plays school well and has a happy smile on their face and by all accounts looks like they're they're performing quite well and then every year that we do this we have a small handful of kids that are like oh my gosh we would never know and and when we call those parents same reaction but you're absolutely right it's it's an amazing program.
I think just overall close enough that picks up I mean we always say I've said it's twenty-six years of education we educate the whole child it's just the parts that we have to educate how to go into the whole child and that's the you know the biggest piece of it that for us to take care of these kids there's just different parts that evolve for us to say we're taking care of them.
And I think that I mean I think that's why I bring up the cell phone thing right like there's a lot of research coming out right now that is showing the impact over ten years of cell phone use and developing mind of our young children right we all know as educators that human development you know young men's mind aren't developed until twenty-five and so they are and women twenty-two twenty-three so they're at such a vulnerable state and if there's something small that we can do yes it's gonna feel like the new world trust me I have a teenager and taking a cell phone away is not fun but if there's something we can do we can do now it's one of those things like they'll thank me later right they'll thank me later for that it's just something that if we have the research in our hands as educators we have to do something that we know can have such a major impact on the future can cell phones be an amazing tool absolutely right I was just talking to someone about like how quick you can be notified about a security issue or an accident or something like that if plans plans change right how quickly my daughter could say our sports thing is canceled after school I need someone like there are benefits of cell phones so I'm not saying there aren't but if research is showing that the impact on mental health is so negative.
Yeah I agree.
We need to get it out of their hands in six to eight hours.
So that's to be sure.
Yeah.
Coming down so.
Yes. Okay.
All right Mr. Smith.
I do feel in hindsight looking back to this presentation I probably should have followed Mr. Schlegel there and run to some of the safety issues that we were or safety initiatives I should say that he was alluding to because this morning still is this morning yes this morning I did want to talk and just give you a little bit of overview on some of the safety aspects that we do here throughout our district twenty-two years ago as a naive administrator some of the best and most daunting advice I got I received from another administrator was just keep them safe and to this day every day when I walk from my truck to the building that is the one thing that goes through my head you're looking at a a a building with the birds singing in the background and everything is calm and I just think keep them safe and as a building administrator walking in and saying seven hundred kids keep them safe is a daunting task one thing that I really didn't realize as I transitioned to this position now is that I walk into a building and almost three thousand kids keep them safe but with that being said I am very very proud of what we do here at Goshen Local School and run to keeping our kids as safe as possible and looking at the slide there was just a few things that I broke it up into our SROs our assessments training and security our SROs are two incredible people it's very easy for a SRO to be a police officer it is very difficult for a police officer to be an SRO because we are blessed with two SROs that have incredible ability to build relationships just like a staff member any member does with our students and they do an absolutely phenomenal job as a director of operations these two individuals are my main key daily to the assessment of our physical plants and our physical buildings they have done they have logged we have a Google sheet that they put on every day and track data for me four hundred and fifty-two daily perimeter checks so each one of them are traveling throughout the buildings are checking every single door in our building for functionality for if it is secure or not and then immediately reporting to me if that is not the situation as it being secured these two individuals are also trained along with the police department yearly in July on our shooter building building response team about eight years ago I started visiting and watching this and I am going to tell you I was amazed our local police department doing a building sweep for lack of better words this is something that you see out of the movies that I never expected the quiet way they tap each other and proceed through a building this I mean it is absolutely mind-blowing that training that they go through and very impressive our assessments that we do throughout the year in August and January we do assessment checks we check all of our swipe cards our readers outside to make sure that they are functioning at the time that doesn't mean the next day they might not be but we are constantly assessing those to make sure that our employees have that immediate twenty-four hour if necessary access our security camera security system here at the high school we have we have selectively put those camera locations can ensure that our building is secure off hours and if it's not we can easily see why not through our nightly security system our security self-assessments conducted yearly we have to submit those to our Claremont County Sheriff's Office of Ohio as well as communication centers as part of our emergency merge our emergency action plan threat assessment teams each one of those each building has a threat assessment team consisting of members throughout and in the building and that threat assessment team has a strategic process that they go through to make sure that any threat that they might receive within their building is or is not a legitimate threat to that building and so far this year we have had eight that have been conducted our training our staff is consistently trained via public school works on the safety aspects as their employee training requires there is training assignment requires and each building which is a very powerful tool turned in August. And each building, which is a very powerful tool, turn in August for a September staff meeting. So right off the bat, these, these staffers as well as administration are placed into a tabletop scenario with various, very serious situations going on and they are talking through and assessing how they may react in that particular situation. Physically on campus, our campus is now fully equipped with almost 300 cameras, which allow us to be very proactive as well as reactive in things that we might need to review. All of our folding classroom doors this past summer were changed out so that those locks stay locked in a particular situation and they are not automatically unlocked as egress occurs. And we also added five storefronts. Those are the glass fixtures in Mark Cook and on Marside, Learning County side and the Cook side, those are all electronic contacts. We also have two electronic contact doors down here on the preschool side. What does that mean? That is kind of the first step and we will talk about this a little bit later in our three year forecast, but that's the first step in having electronic devices where you can key them down, unlock them or lock them remotely without being at that door physically to do that. So those doors are currently equipped to do that. I also, my only, the second slide, I wanted to give a board just a little bit of preview of just things that are going on or will be going on within the district physically in our plant this summer. It does say celebrations at the top and there are a couple celebrations that are listed on this short little list. Our first thing is parking lots. We have our parking lots, things that often people don't think about. These are eight years old when we first installed those lights and they have about a five year duration, life duration. So we are currently in a sequence process, we'll be replacing 32 of those parking lines. You may or may have not noticed some of those that are out.
The LED lights, five years.
Five years, 50,000 years. So if you're getting a 10 year warranty on an LED light, a manufacturer is really trying to go out on a limb. 50,000 hours based on a 12 hour night burn. So yes. Stage curtains and an SES, this is one of those celebrations. We've been waiting on the, yay! We have been waiting on this process for those, for those curtains to come down from Canada egg. That's where they were manufactured for almost a year. But I'm happy to say as of last, last week, spring break, those were installed and we have hopefully two happy administrators and other people in that building. Our baseball softball scores, we will be replacing or repainting, resurfacing those this summer. Our Moats Field Maintenance has occurred this year and our Moats Field Maintenance Report looks very good. So that, that, that gives you a report on the safety condition of that field for our athletes and we just received that back this week and we are in good shape there. Our Moats-
Mr. Smith, could I just, real quick, I did put a, I sent that into FYI, a copy of that report that we just got, so you guys can just kind of get an idea of what all, I mean, it's, I mean, they checked the safety of the, you know, the compact and all that kind of stuff, so you guys, sorry.
Our Moats Field Goal Replacement is also another success story. You may or may not know that field goal post was hit with a-
I jumped out.
I jumped out, thank you, and was replaced. However, it was replaced with an incorrect field goal post. So, and it was not quite straight. And long story short, Moats has been fighting with guilt, the manufacturer, for almost a year to get the bright, upright post on there and we finally do have that installed and it's straight and looks beautiful. Shot disc fence, backstop fence, that's the project we'll be taking on this summer, just replacing the current hardware that's there with a black fence structure to keep our kids safe there. Some other things that we'll be working on, our pond area is a consistent area that we have on the back burner that is always getting cleaned up. Our goal is to consistently start cleaning that area out and making it more attractive, appealing to the public as well as our centerpiece of our campus. We have a lot of drainage issues throughout the district, which were quite evident this past week and in the past few other weeks for some reason, that we will be addressing, which is ditching and other catch basin areas. Flagpoles, some of you may not know this, flagpoles get adjusted yearly. Why is that? They're in a sand base and if you look at them a lot of times throughout the year, we'll get a little bit of this, but that is one thing that happens yearly to make sure that those are straight. Our GMS floor is getting resurfaced, that gym will be out of process, out of commission for about five weeks coming up. That is a insurance coverage that will be occurring here.
Tornado.
Tornado, yes. And we have almost 4,000 square footage of flooring here in the carpet, or carpet here in the high school that we will be replacing with ECT tile, which is the tile you see in the hallway. And that is mainly due to restructuring and moving staff members to accommodate different spaces next year where carpet just not, would be conducive for that, not to mention that it is 20 plus years old. We've also, or will be adding a printer here at the high school, which is quite a printer that will take care of a lot of our outsourcing costs that we take care of, i.e. like the, just a quick example, the senior banners that you see in the, and I know Mark has his hand up because he wants to elaborate on this.
If you'd like me to give a TED Talk, I will.
I think, I think we'll go over that one as we get it in.
So we will be doing that as well and also just the last one there, we do have some work to be doing in addressing that fence that is separating our property with the property in between SES and- Question.
The baseball softball field scoreboard.
Yes.
Said, replaced or repainted?
Yes. So basically, that's just an RFM out there to find out cost wise. I know that those are a concern and aesthetically, they do not look very-
Can't hardly look at them.
Correct.
See the score.
So, our biggest, one of our biggest challenges is fighting the color red outside. So, and fading the paint. So I'm really investigating, that's an ongoing investigating thing for the summer. I mean, how feasible and, and what kind of warranty can you move the paint as opposed to a replacement? So, I mean, that's just all the-
Is Rogers for those two and how do we do for the?
I, we do not-
We're working on that a little bit. Greg Miller's got something coming up from, Greg and Scott from athletic standpoint for creating new opportunity for advertising dollars and supporting it.
I have a question. Do we have, GMS looks so great with the panels painted gray, other than the pink color. Are we going to do that at some point to the Cook side?
I'll be real honest with you, I am on extreme hold because that project has, that painting project has already failed.
Why?
I said fail as in the contractors were just out last week to address peeling paint from this hall. I mean, it's already started figuring from the top. So I really want to be apprehensive about painting some of those panels until we have the concrete, but I agree with what you're saying.
Until we get a great paint that comes in and holds up.
Right, it's good.
Yes. Okay.
So, I have quickly learned that this is normally a full day retreat. I know, and you know, there's so much, it's important for you guys to know that the second session of this is finance and buildings, but I just want to reiterate, everything we do, everything Troy does, everything Tom does, everything our building principals do, goes back to that mission, vision, portrait of a graduate. We're focused, we continue to focus on closing academic and mental health gaps. Things we're doing are working. You're hearing it from data, you're hearing it from kids, you're seeing it in some attendance rates. Our focus continues to be on how do we directly impact kids and how do we allocate the resources to kids and staff so that they can do so. Changes are going to come, it's a continual process in education and probably in the world. We're, we're going to adapt to changes. You saw some examples this morning, business track, steam positions, we're going to continue to revamp that webpage and visitor system and it's just giving us time to fine tune a process. If we stick to our mission, our vision, our portrait of a graduate and our action steps, we will continue to be a leading district and we are leading. People look to us to see how we're doing what we're doing. It starts here, funnels down to our teachers. We have incredible people here with an incredible sense of direction and we get it done. So, I had a slide in there to get feedback on all that. I think we had time on each of those, so this will save us probably 15 minutes I had building in my head to get some feedback on that. As I said, portrait of a graduate, part of areas, we'll continue to refine that and bring those to you each year. Probably take some time next summer to really dig down into the portrait of a graduate, make sure that we're, mission, vision's still critical or if we need to shift anything. That said, it's been a great time. I had 15 minutes, we're an hour over. I, I do feel like, let's take, you know, let's take the time we need here real quick to get a break. We're going to come back, hit financial and hit a little bit more facility. Building admin, I am going to say this, I know I told you guys, you have to go if you've got childcare needs, whatever else. I'd love for you to stay, but if you've got other things, hopefully we'll be, we'll be done by noon-ish.
I'm like, I'm like, I think it's actually, I thought it was noon.
I do want to say before I get started, just to give a shout out to my staff. I mean, like Lisa Anne and Jenna do a phenomenal job. And you have the fact that we've got clean audits, you know, it's a team. I mean, everyone really is doing what they're supposed to be doing, but it's just huge. We got that and I do want to give a little shout out too. Like with everything you see here, all that stuff costs. There was nothing here that we're doing that's free. So for us this year, that the fact that we're going to, I mean, I know we're, I mean, we're close enough now. It's like predicting the weather. We're close enough to June 30th that we will be under budget again this year, next 10 years in a row. And it's a hat off to everyone that does that. So I just wanted to say that. Last thing, I love that Troy said something, a prior person told him. And I remember the prior treasurer told me that when you start, he said, you look at that checkbook like you're a. And I really love that voice because I want to make sure when I cut a check, I pay the bill, you know? And same thing here. So anyhow, in your packet, there is this, we do have all this right here. It's our cash summer report and the cash summer report where you guys approve this every meeting. So, and this is basically our checkbook. And I just kind of want to walk through this to the figures that put up there. But these codes are uniforms to go with any school district. Oh, one is general fund. And I just want to say on our general fund, that's what rolls up to our five year forecast. And so on our cash summer report, all of the oh ones in total roll to the five year forecast. We have separate cost centers. There's like student wellness on there and DPA that's center on oh one nine three two two. Those are monies that were restricted grants and aid that we get from the state that we pay a lot of our staff. The oh two fund is a bond retirement fund. Our ours went away in December 22. What we have on here is one of our cops issues has one year retain each amount that's sitting on there. So that's what that balance is there. The oh three is our PI fund. We use that basically to a lot of the repairs and stuff that Mr. Smith was talking about earlier. You know, when we go out there and we work on lights and all that kind of stuff, anything instead of five year useful life or more. We do try to maintain our stuff. I mean, like lights go out, we fix them, you know? If we have a leaky roof, we fix it. So a lot of that stuff we do on the PI fund. The oh six, that is our school loan program. A lot of school districts, if you look at ours right here, we have a decent balance in our account. I mean, Brooke does a great job and so does our staff, but we've been, we've been in the black for quite some time on that. And it's just really good work there. And then you don't see that in every district as well. The next is oh seven, we, those are trust funds. So we do have some money, like if you look on there, we have Mr. Mark's scholarship. That was left to the school district. The alumni association tells us who to pay. We pay out scholarships out of that account. And so that is. The oh nines, those are the buildings, that's where the student fees go in. So like our K eight, $45 that goes in there. Each of the buildings use that for like their student handbooks and various expenditures along that line. So that's what those funds are used for. The oh eighteens, each principal has an account that they use if they do fundraisers or anything. Go up in the field trips or do that sort of stuff. Those activities run through those are oh three four. That went away like when the OFSC project back in 2000, when we got that, we have a half mill that they help us use for buying materials to maintain the buildings, like filters, lights, all that kind of stuff. Well, that went away, but I just want to point out there that that is a hundred thousand dollars more. We have to absorb in our general fund to pay for those types of stuff. The 200 student activities, those are just like our national honor society student council. The 300 is our athletic teams of band. Any fund that you see that has a 400 is a state grant. It's a 400 state, 500 is federal. And then, so that's kind of an overview of that cash summary report. Does anyone, do you guys have any questions on that? I know I kind of ran through that quick. I mean, the one thing if you see on the 500 accounts, a lot of those are negative because what happens is the states or federal grants, if you spend the money, then we get reimbursed, then they look at that. So what we see is negative that we put in reimbursement, they send it to us. That's kind of how that works.
Can you do me a favor? Can you explain the top as well? I mean, I understand what initial cash is. Can you explain just each?
Okay. Yeah. So like on the, on the general fund, we'll just focus on that going across the 2.1 million dollars. That's how much we collected this month. Or I mean, this is what you guys will be approving next month. So this is for March, we brought in 2.1 million dollars. Our fiscal year to date received, we brought in 27,599. Our month to date expenditures, so just for the month of March, we spent 2.9 million dollars. We've spent in total for the fiscal year, which is where July 1 to 630, 25 million. We currently have in our general fund, 13 million. Incumbrances, that's how much we've got POs up for. And a lot of times what we'll do is we do blanket purchase orders for like busing. We know we're going to be paying a bus invoice every time. So I'm accounting ESC for like PT OT speech services. We pay that every month, the Duke bill. So that's what we have encumbered still. So then unencumbered balances are available balance out there. So like we have 9.7 that's unencumbered sitting in our account in the general.
And then so when you say a 10 year in a row, that we've been.
Correct. Our, and that's our, yes, that's our general fund that we've maintained a positive balance on that. Anybody else have questions on that?
10 years in a row that we've been beneath our budget.
Yes. So on here, we spend dollars to make a positive difference for all the students and staff. And it's always been a team effort to prioritize and that's identifying needs versus wants. And I think when you were sitting here, listening to everyone talk earlier, you know, we're putting all of those together. When Mark's talking about technology, so out there on technology, what is our spend? Do we need to get those technologies? Do we need to do that or do we need to replace some, a section of roof? We have to buy classroom materials or we're going to invest in the kids going to more college career readiness activity. So all those things, it's kind of a, you know, you juggle that and you pick up our salaries and benefits of teachers' costs. And you know, we really try to maintain on what is our true need versus our want. And that's why I just kind of added in proactive planning is that we bring that all together. What is our priority? And I mean, we'll sit down and I know the administrative team sits down and goes through, you know, what do we really need? And I've seen like this team give up like, all right, let's get a preschool unit and we'll, we'll put something at the high school in the background. I mean, that sort of thing is a team effort, like that's, that's our priority. So we really look at that. You know, in our general fund this year, I mean, like what's happened with the governor's office? I put on here that we're under a new funding formula. For the first time in a long time, they came up with what they thought was the best way to fund schools. And they phased in and then over six years. And you know, Governor DeWine indicated that we are still going to use the fair school funding program, but we don't know for sure on down the road. I mean, you know, when you sit there and the state does a five year, so we'll get two years of state. We're trying to do a five year forecast. It makes it really tough if you don't know what they're going to be doing there. But it looks like that's going to be phased in for these next couple of years. All right. So priority spending, like just last year, and when I said last year, that was fiscal year 20. Technology, Mark had a big spend and we did a huge spend on all of our like, I would say infrastructure of our computers, like behind the scenes type stuff. It wasn't all just a bunch of laptops. I mean, this was really getting into weeds of our technologies. I better just leave it at that. Our send academy, I mean, if you look up there, it's like, and that's a lot of salaries and staff. I mean, you're looking at that one was a half million dollar spend. Everyone talked about that. I'm sure you heard that in the building. It's a mental health services, huge dollars. We went out and contracted with the ESC to get those dollars. Tutoring, you know, we spent about $50,000 on tutors. I mean, and we got them in every building. Our LEAP services, which is, you know, for kids, ACT prep, we provide that for those kids. Huge impact. I mean, I mean, I sit there and listen to what some kids get on their ACT scores, how much they approve after getting that. That turns into scholarship dollars for them. It is huge. HVAC, we spent $283,000 last year. And I just want, I just doing here, like we didn't spend a whole lot because we was doing all the tornado repairs, you know, in these last couple of times. But our roofs right now in the district is about $14 million. So I mean, that's a huge asset you got to take care of. We're getting, I don't know how much I missed that one little section with Mr. Smith, but we're having the parking lots looked at. What is our total spend and total blacktop? You know, if we have to redo this, this is a significant amount of money too, which we put off. And I just, the thing I left that on there because you know, we've tried to pass bond issues to end space. Well, we'd hate to go out there and put a whole lot of money in our parking lots. Then all of a sudden here comes the truck, the trucks with the block and here comes the concrete trucks. And here, you know, and then, you know, to invest in the parking lots and have that all destroyed during that. We was hoping to get a lot of that stuff done as well as our HVAC work to get tied in on that. Am I pushing my time here? I don't know. All right. So grants, I mean, I think probably everyone in here is broke, broke for a grant. And we've got some significant ones. We got, I just pointed out a couple up here, expanded opportunities. We got 300,000, our school safety grant, we got 100,000 per building when Mr. Smith was talking about the cameras and all that stuff that we did, a lot of that was paid for with grant dollars. Workman's comp grant, we're looking on, we've got it for like our bleachers. So the students that had to pull out bleachers, when we did that in the middle school in Spaulding, made those automated. That was Stewart, some grants. And then I put on filler and they gave us one for 10,000. We applied for it if we can get it. The district as a whole, sit down and put in for 2.8 million dollars. And that was a lot of the stuff is Governor DeWine put something out there about health source. I mean, or school, school based healthcare. That's what we applied for there to get additional space that they're really pushing at. And then I just put up there title one, the 461,000, title two, A77. Those are consolidated grants. So like the state, every school district in Ohio goes for those in the CCIP. So that's just a couple of those. We get those every year.
You say title two, you say, did you say eight 77 or two 77?
Oh, what? No, I'm sorry.
The title two.
You said 77. Oh, 77, it's title two, yeah, we got 77 for that.
Hey Todd, will we apply for those? Just because I don't know, do those, all that money that we apply for go towards that? Or are we able to break it up and use it for other things?
Most of those are all like this is what you spend it on. I will say like, for example, title one, like when we do the budget, like Teresa, she'll sit here and look at the title one budget. Because we can, we can spend it on salaries, benefits, purchase services or supplies. We kind of look at like other per, what are we doing? Maybe we'll pay this salaries out of this and buy the supplies from this grant or vice versa. We just kind of look at it and see, you know, where we, we spend all of our federal dollars and say, you know, if we get it, we spend it. But it's pretty much restricted.
I don't want to exactly what you spend it, but if you spit in that area, you'll take that money and spend it elsewhere. So it'll fill in something you're already spending or you could expand the program right in the grant board, right?
Yeah. And then reimbursement, this is what we got last year, like E-rate, Mr. Sl, I mean, that's a fun, it's all of our like technology type stuff. And the feds give us an E-rate fund. That's an average because two years ago, Mr. Slag will put in.
Program, a lot of school districts, if you look at ours right here, we have a decent balance in our account. I mean, Brooke does a great job and so is our staff, but we've been, we've been in the black for quite some time on that. And it's just really good work there. And then you don't see that in every district as well. The next is oh oh seven, we, those are trust funds. So we do have some money, like if you look on there, we have Mr. Mark's scholarship. That was left to the school district. The alumni association tells us who to pay. We pay out scholarships out of that account. And so that is. The oh nines, those are the building, uh, that's where the student fees go in. So like our K eight forty five dollars that goes in there. Each of the buildings use that for like their student handbooks and various expenditures along that line. So that's what those funds are used for. Um, the oh eighteen's, each principal has an account that they use. If they do fundraisers or anything, go up in the field trips or do that sort of stuff, those activities run through. Those are oh three four, um, that went away, like when the OFSC project back in two thousand, when we got that. We have a half mill that they help us use for biomaterials to maintain the buildings, like filters, lights, all that kind of stuff. Well, that went away, but I just want to point out there that that is a hundred thousand dollars more we have to absorb in our general fund to pay for those type of stuff. Uh, the two hundred student activities, those are just like our National Honor Society Student Council. The three hundred is our athletic teams of band. And any, uh, fund that you see that has a four hundred is a state grant. It's a four hundred state, five hundred is federal. And then, so that's kind of an overview of that cash summary report. Does anyone, do you guys have any questions on that? I know I kind of ran through that quick. I mean, the one thing, if you see on the five hundred accounts, a lot of those are negative because what happens is with states or federal grants, if you spend the money, then we get reimbursed, they look at that. So what we see is negative that we put in reimbursement, they send it to us. That's kind of how that works.
Can you, can you do me a favor? Can you explain the top as well? I mean, I understand what initial cash is. Can you explain just each?
Okay. Yeah. So like on the, on the general fund, we'll just focus on that going across the two point one million dollars. That's how much we collected this month. Or I mean, this is what you guys will be approving next month. So this is for March, we brought in two point one million dollars. Our fiscal year to date received, we brought in twenty seven five nine nine. Our month to date expenditures, so just for the month of, uh, March, we spent two point nine million dollars. We've spent in total for the fiscal year, which is, we're July one to six thirty, twenty five million. We currently have in our general fund thirteen million. Incumbrances, that's how much we've got POs up for. And a lot of times what we'll do is we do blanket purchase orders for like busing. We know we're going to be paying a bus invoice every time. So my county ESC for like P T O T speech services, we pay that every month, the Duke bill. So that's what we have encumbered still. So then unencumbered balances are available balance out there. So like, we have nine point seven that's unencumbered sitting in our account in the general.
And then, so when you say a ten year in a row, that we've been.
Correct. Our gen, and that's our, yes, that's our general fund that we, we maintain a positive balance on that. Anybody else have questions on that?
Ten years in a row that we've been beneath our budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so on here, we spend dollars to make a positive difference for all the students and staff. And it's always been a team effort to prioritize. And that's identifying needs versus wants. And I think when you were sitting here, listening to everyone talk earlier, you know, we're putting all of those together. When Mark's talking about technology, so out there on technology, what is our spend? Do we need to get those technologies? Do we need to do that? Or do we need to re, uh, replace some, a section of roof? We have to buy classroom materials or we're going to invest in the kids going to more college career readiness activity. So all those things, it's kind of a, you know, you juggle that and you pick up our salaries and benefits and of, of teachers cost. And you know, we really try to maintain on what is our true need versus our want. And that's why I just kind of added in proactive planning is that we bring that all together. What is our priority? And I mean, we'll sit down and, uh, I know the administrative team sits down and goes through, you know, what do we really need? And I've seen like this team give up like, all right, let's get a preschool unit and we'll, we'll put something at the high school in the background. I mean, that sort of thing is a team effort. Like that's, that's our priority. So we really look at that. Um, you know, in our general fund, this year, I mean, like what's happened with the governor's office, I put on here that we're under a new funding formula. For the first time in a long time, they came up with what they thought was the best way to fund schools. And we're, they phase in and then over six years. And, you know, Governor Wanda indicated that we are still going to use the fair school funding program. But we don't know for sure on down the road. I mean, you know, when you sit there and the state does a five year, so we're only getting two years of state. We're trying to do a five year forecast. It makes it really tough. You don't know what they're going to be doing there. But it looks like that's going to be phased in for these next couple of years. All right. So priority spending, like just last year, and when I said last year, that was fiscal year twenty four. Technology, Mark had a big spend and we did a huge spend on all of our, like, I would say infrastructure of our computers, like behind the scenes type stuff. It wasn't all just a bunch of laptops. I mean, this was really getting into the weeds of our technologies. I better just leave it at that. Our send academy, I mean, if you look up there, it's like, and that's a lot of salaries and staff. I mean, you're looking at that one was a half million dollar spend. Everyone talked about that. I'm sure you heard that in the building. It's a mental health services, huge dollars. We, we went out and contracted with the ESC to get those dollars. Tutoring, uh, you know, we spent about fifty thousand dollars on tutors. I mean, and we got them in every building. Our leap services, which is, you know, for kids, ACT prep, we provide that for those kids. Huge impact. I mean, I mean, I sit there and listen to what some kids get on their ACT scores, how much they approve after getting that. That turns into scholarship dollars for them. It is huge. HVAC, we spent two hundred eighty three thousand dollars last year. And I just want, I just doing here, like, we didn't spend a whole lot because we was doing all the tornado repairs, you know, in these last couple of times. But our roofs right now in the district is about fourteen million dollars. So I mean, that's a huge asset you got to take care of. We're getting, I don't know how much, I missed that one little section with Mr. Smith, but we're having the parking lots looked at. What is our total spend and total blacktop? You know, if we have to redo this, this is a significant amount of money too, which we put off. And I, I just, the thing, I left that on there because, you know, we've tried to pass bond issues to end space. Well, we'd hate to go out there and put a whole lot of money in our parking lots. Then all of a sudden, here comes the truck, the trucks with the block and here comes the concrete trucks. And here, you know, and then, you know, to invest in the parking lots and have that all destroyed during that. We was hoping to get a lot of that stuff done as well as our HVAC work to get tied in on that. Am I pushing my time here? I don't.
No, I'm good.
All right. So grants, I mean, I, I think probably everyone in here is broke, broke for a grant. And we've got some significant ones. We got, I just pointed out a couple up here, expanded opportunities, we got three hundred thousand. Our school safety grant, we got a hundred thousand per building when Mr. Smith was talking about, uh, cameras and all that stuff that we did. A lot of that was paid for with grant dollars. Um, workman's comp grant, um, we're looking on, uh, we've got it for like our bleachers, so that the students that had to pull out bleachers. When we did that in the middle school in Spalding, made those automated, that was Stewart, some, some grants. And then I put on a filler and they gave us one for ten thousand. We applied for it if we can get it. The district as a whole, uh, sit down and put in for two point eight million dollars. And, you know, that was a lot of the stuff, as Governor Dewine put something out there about health source, I mean, or school, school based healthcare. That's what we applied for there to get additional space that they're really pushing at. Uh, and then I just put up there title one, the four hundred sixty one thousand, title two A seventy seven. Those are consolidated grants. So like the state, every school district in Ohio goes for those in the CCIP. So that's just a couple of those. We get those every year.
You say title two, you say, did you say eight seventy seven to seventy seven?
Oh, what? No, I'm sorry.
The title two.
You said seventy seven. Oh, seventy seven. It's title two. Yeah, we got seventy seven.
Hey Todd, will we apply for those? Just because I don't know, do, do those, all that money that we apply for go towards that? Or are we able to break it up and use it for other things?
Oh, it, most of those are all like this is what you spend it on. I will say like, for example, title one, like when we do the budget, like Teresa, she'll sit here and look at the title one budget, because we can, we can spend it on salaries, benefits, purchase services or supplies. We kind of look at like other per, what are we doing? Maybe we'll pay this salaries out of this and buy the supplies from this grant or vice versa. We just kind of look at it and see, you know, where we, we spend all of our federal dollars and say, you know, if we get it, we spend it, but it's pretty much restricted.
I don't want to exactly what you spend it, but if you spit in that area, you'll take that money and spend it elsewhere. So it'll fill in something you're already spending, or you could expand your program, right?
Yeah. And then reimbursement, this is what we got last year, like E rate, um, Mr. Sl, I mean, that's a fun, it's all of our like technology type stuff. And the feds give us an E rate fund. That's an average because two years ago, Mr. Slague will put in, when we did all this major hardware. I mean, we got a really significant amount of funds.
Two hundred seventy three thousand dollars.
There you go. Our cat costs, those are for kids. I mean, we're talking, uh, I just kind of threw that in there. If the kids exceed twenty seven thousand dollars, so we're talking, um, they have AIDS, they have a lot of special needs services. If the kids cost over twenty seven thousand, well, there's different categories of kids. If it's a regular kid, you won't get, I'm sorry, that's a bad example because it would be a regular student. But if we have higher needs kids, they get, they exceed those amounts, we can put in for their services. Like if they needed a one on one aid, if they needs, uh.
Physical therapy.
Thank you. OTPT, all that kind of stuff. We can put in, because that exceeds those thresholds, we can get that, what they call catastrophic cost. Last year, we pulled in two hundred twenty eight thousand. And, um, the excess costs, those are kids, special needs kids as well, that you have to, you reach out there. Those thresholds aren't as much for them though, because you're getting your state share. But still, we pulled in a hundred sixty three thousand on that. And then any kid that's Medicaid eligible or family, when those kids are getting services, the staff puts in really under Mr. Turner's toolage, that this is our Medicaid eligible, and that's what we get reimbursed there. So I guess at the end of the day, you don't, districts don't have to do that, but I mean, it's, that is significant dollars that helps make a progress, you know, do our.
A lot of time and effort by people to make sure that we're keeping good records and that we've got the right systems to be able to get them reimbursed. Didn't put up there. I mean, we're one of the few districts that go out and get reimbursed for the industry credentials we're doing at the high school. Put in for that to get reimbursed. The district only know that's going on. So we are continually grants reimbursing in general fund, trying to find the best way to spend the dollars.
Yep. Anything to say to general fund? I'll just touch on this briefly, you know, like after COVID came, Esser dollars, everyone got Esser dollars, you know, elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. So we got, if we get the next one. This is what we pulled in for our Esser funds. And if you do the math on that, you're, you're, we're pushing about five million dollars. Now, what we did with those, those type, our Esser one and two have both been spent and gone. And this September, our funds will be spent. So then, this is where we're basically, we took all those expenditures. I just for now showed them in our general fund forecast. So just so you know, if you look at like our salaries and benefits, I'll show you a little bit on there, but, uh, that's what we're hoping to do.
I think the important thing to mention on that too is when Esser came out, the state gave less, right? So during those COVID times, if it's Esser dollars and our, you know, the, the fiscal funding, the formula from outside of it was basically going to pause. So it was use those dollars, if that makes sense.
Just supplement at the normal dollars.
Correct. Or any increase coming up the state.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and really the, the team sent down, I mean, like the whole team afterward, you know, we got awarded these funds, we just go out there and just spend it. I mean, if you look, we added summer school, we added additional nurse, you know, like man was first coming in, he's got COVID, what do we do? Do we send them all, give them a mask? I mean, you know, and that helped out tremendously. We started the family engagement, you know, all of, uh, Hamilton County Educational Service there, we got behavior support, mass support. So you look at those up there, math intervention, tutoring, we went through trying to say like, hey, these kiddos, man, went through a rough time. What do we need to do to catch them back up? And we have spent all those funds out of that amount. And I think, you know, if you look down there, I, I, I put the little thing, remember, we got four and a half stars. I mean, we got kids coming in with some high needs and you, I mean, our team, you got everyone, went out there and still got that. I, I think it's just a huge, like, you know, it just, it's a testament to how hard we worked to make sure we spent those dollars.
Now, what I will say from outside, from Todd's side is, because he is the way he is and go back to checkbook. When we put those things in, his question was, will we be able to sustain this? Or we have to evaluate each year, can we sustain this and is this program working? So I guess he goes through this.
Our safety.
That's where schools and families, they're, they're struggling. You'll see it in the end of his, they did not, they did not plan.
But I also, the Esser funds were, you had to, you had to use them in certain ways, correct? That was supporting the needs of the kids that were like behind or that were suffering because of COVID or.
There was some restrictions on it at the end, but that was really catching kids up, you know, a lot of ways. I mean, there's other ones that's got more restrictions, a little lenient, because I mean, some districts, and I'm not meaning this bad, but they built a gym just so they could move the kids out and fight about white space. I'm sitting there like. I don't, I don't know. I'm not, you know, everyone, I don't know that district situation, but I mean, I've heard of that. It's like.
But our kids have, have responded in terms of testing and all of that because we did the services that we need to get them back in.
Yeah. And we're still seeing academic gaps, which is why we say can we sustain it and are these things good? And that is where we're still catching up.
Okay, right.
Okay. On this next one, our, the five year forecast that you guys get, I mean, it is formula driven. I think I've kind of mentioned it enough time. But they now have a little power point. So this right here will tie right into our five year forecast that you guys will have Monday night. And I just want you to say, we're, we're starting the year off with thirteen million dollars is what we did, July one of twenty twenty three. That's what we started for the year. And we're projected this year to go up to fifteen five. I mean, the, sorry about that. Already about to be fifteen five. So we got a gain of about two point one million dollars. And that's right on our, our line for this year. So you remember, I mean, we're basically, we're funded with taxes and property values. And I, I can tell you right now, you know, we don't control where when or why they, or when they do it or anything, but we're on a three year cycle. And it happened last year. And I can tell you, a thirty nine percent increase is unheard of, never heard of. So you know that we got this kind of increase that we did. And so what has transpired over this time is that is the state dollars, I mean, as our local dollars go up, state dollars go down. And right now, it's, uh, it's a tough situation for a lot of districts. I put on here that some districts benefit and some do not. I mean, right now, there's a hundred and eighty one districts I've called OD just to make sure that that's on the guarantee. So they go to what they got in the prior year. And I'm just using this for example, if it was twenty million dollars, if the formula comes through and says you're worth getting fifteen, they would move up to get that same twenty. That's what they call the guarantee. Now for us, we're on the formula. So we're above by a lot of kids that were not on the guarantee.
We're not in the guarantee?
Correct. I mean, we're not one of the one hundred and eighty one, but there's districts around us that are. And so when you sit there and think, depending on, you know, like for us, on our state revenue, we get money from the state. If we was on the guarantee and that number wasn't moving and the costs are going up, we got in here about forty eight percent. That's a huge, you're, you're, it's, it's a bad situation, you know. So, um, just wanted to put that up. So I did kind of run it there that we did, you know, we do benefit from the state funding. And, um, our local share has jumped and you'll see.
Now, districts that are on the guarantee are the ones that are continually having to chase lobbies too, because of the cost. That makes sense.
So what we got was one die.
What happened there?
Oh my gosh. All right. So before valuation, like before we did this, if you looked at our old forecast, we basically was going to get thirty two percent from our local. And when I say local, over here, that's our real estate taxes. That's our public utility. We don't get a whole lot in that. And then our income tax, you know, the one percent. So those together make up thirty two percent. The rest we get from the state is fifty nine percent. I mean, we're one that if we were on guarantee, we would really, really be in trouble. And then over here, all other revenues, nine percent, I mean, that's our interest income. I can tell you that's went up a little bit because our interest rates are really good. And you know, the fact that we do have some cash in the bank and we're getting about five percent, that's a big number. And, and, and that was not planned on at the beginning of the year. But what happened after the revow, if you looked, if you go to the next slide, hopefully it's. After our revow, we've already moved two percent. We already went down in local taxes thirty four because we jumped almost a million dollars on our local dollar. I mean, that's a, that's a big number. And so then what the state's doing, they're taking that, that two percent away. So there's a shift there. And that's going to happen as we go along here for a while.
Set media, set of media?
Well, the state, it'll be next fiscal year. That's a great question because the state budget will start July. On our real estate taxes, they, they bill, they have settlements in August and February. So we got our February settlement. But we haven't got all the dollars yet, I'm sorry. But we've already pulled in more than we first anticipated. I mean, I'm telling you, I'd be lying to you if I said last year when I set our budget up, we're going to have a thirty nine percent in real estate tax. I mean, like, nobody would guess. It's unheard of. So it's, uh, so, so that growth, we'll see that in next year. You know what I mean? Because it's.
Correct. The state funding will be.
Correct, correct.
That's important to let the public know as well, that even though we're getting more money through, um, local funding, like the property taxes and such, the state sees that and they're making sure that we don't fill over.
It's, it's, it's going to be huge. And, and I, I, the one thing that, when you look at all the new subdivisions going in, like our new construction cost in the past is probably just, you know, like one or two percent, you know, you see a new houses here and there. But not now. I mean, like, we're, each year, that new construction growth and that impact on it, I, I, I'm still going to be learning on that myself, to be honest with you. Because this is unheard of numbers, you know, what we're going to be getting on that. Then, you know, you take into account, let's just say that if we get a new subdivision, we have to add a bus. Our buses right now are ninety thousand a pop. That's a significant amount of money. Say if we got to run two out there. Right now, we have thirty routes at ninety thousand. I don't, you know, two point seven million dollars a bus. That didn't count in the fuel, I mean, at all on that. So, um, just real quick here on our current fiscal year.
I want her back.
Huh? I was just going to go off that pie chart real quick. Just so you know, for salaries and benefits, because if you look on this right here, personnel cost, that's our salaries and benefits for all the staff that we got. And then we're a little bit less. If you, if you look at different ones in the state, I just want you guys, if you ever go out there and start comparing, purchase services, we do contract out busing and Alpha Omega, where a lot of districts have that in their personnel cost, if that makes sense. And then all others, just supplies and that sort of thing. But you can see transportation, Alpha Omega, our ESC bills, curriculum support, all that comes out of purchase services. I want to get.
Fuel, yeah, fuel.
Fuel, fuel costs on that. I mean, last month was seventeen thousand dollars for our fuel, one month. So that's a pretty big one. And so it, on our forecast, I mean, if you look, and I mean, we always try to maintain budget, but just projecting based on those numbers, the blue is our revenue and the tanish color here is expenditure. We're starting to get into our, our money. And you can see that here on our, this is our cash balance just projected out. Now, this is not like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, because we are still projecting, like I said at the beginning, fifteen million. And then on down the road, thirteen million. So, I mean, we look good, but I can tell you a lot of the stuff that, um, the bond issued, the, the bond, since the bond issue didn't pass, we're going to be spending some dollars out of the general fund that we really was hoping not to. And I guess what I'm saying there is like, like the parking lots and we have need to upgrade our HVAC. So those are the things that was hoping like you add in space and you tie all the, you know, mechanical all in together, but.
Well, and I, you look at this, knowing how Goshen's funded, and I will say that every year, you sit down, you look at revenue, you look at expenses and you make decisions because there's no going back to say we need more operating, just is not there. So we have to live within that. We have to make decisions based on that. There's good years, there's bad years, there's dips in the economy, there's job loss, whatever. We have to, we have to look at that every year and all that. You wish you could forecast that. As Todd said, you got a two year biennial budget from the state. We don't know what year three, four and five look like because we don't know what their next two year budget's going to look like. So we have to look at this, as he said, it's our checkbook. We got to look at it, it's daily. But, you know, those projections like Todd, you know, it's not scary, but you know, if you start dipping into cash, we have to start looking at it, saying, how do we get back to balanced in that year? So as yearly look at.
Um, this is just our change in revenue. I mean, I just kind of really threw it on there because inflation, I mean, in prior years, we was about three point five. Now we're on two. I mean, a one percent increase in our expenditures, when you're talking thirty something million dollars, that's a big number as well. So just to kind of give you an idea of what that, on that forecast, I thought that was something neat to see because our revenue is not keeping up with expenditures. You know, it's just not doing it. So our next one. I thought this is an interesting one too. Like at the end of each fiscal year, if we just stopped and didn't collect a dime, this is how many days we could go cash flow before we're out of money.
This year, we could go a hundred and sixty days if our state funding and everything.
If it stopped today, we could make payroll and everything for.
Hundred and sixty days, that's it.
Yeah, about five months. So, I mean, it's a big number, but I mean, we're a pretty big business too. I mean, you know, we're spending thirty something million dollars a year. I mean, that's, it's a big number. So. The cost per pupil, I thought this was pretty good too. Like our daily costs, like that, putting them on the bus, giving them beans and. Us being involved and getting them back home and an education, seventy four dollars a day, that's not too shabby. I mean, I, I know when I had, uh, my kids in daycare, heck, I was paying that more. I have no hair. So it's significant bucks there. And this right here on fiscal year twenty four, I'm just up. The prior slide where I showed that our numbers were down, that's not tied in directly because this is our, our numbers for this year. So, um, we're looking at our local taxes, our, our Goshen people are paying, we're paying thirty three percent versus every, from state, local, every, or not local, state and federal dollars, sixty seven percent. So we're paying about a third of the cost locally on that. This is one, like every school district in Ohio has got a dot, six hundred and ten dots up there, believe it or not. We're the red one. The, this red line here is performance index. So you want to be above the performance index, which we are. And we are actually per pupil less than the average spend out there. So that's, I mean, we're in good shape doing what we've got to be doing.
What are we at per pupil?
Uh, I have to.
I'm going to write this report card. So I don't think that's on one of these logs.
I'll get that for you. I mean, I don't have the actual amount. It's like thirteen, no, twelve, I think. I, I'll, I'll look it up. I don't.
I'm not going to guess.
I'll get that. I'll get that. I want you, I want that to be accurate. Operating funds, I just put in all of our bordering districts, and this is from the state report card in twenty two, twenty three, on what everyone did, I mean, where their money comes from locally. And you can see our number was twenty eight point nine, which is a little bit different on that prior slide. And you go all the way up to like Love One, is it fifty six point four percent of their money comes from their local? So that's telling, you know, if you look on there, basically they're getting all their money from locals, not as much money from the state, you know, that sort of thing. We do have the one percent. I mean, I, that's, that's our, the salvation, you know, when whoever back in the day came up with that. That is why we're doing super well. Here's the districts here that run operating levels. I mean, the fact that we've been doing so well, I mean, I take a ton of pride. I, I did not want this to fall under my watch ever. We did not, we have not run an operating level since nineteen seventy six. That's when House Bill nine twenty came into effect, which is like values go up, mileage comes down, you know, the sort of thing. And we have not done that. And that's all thanks to that. And, uh, you know, it's just used into the, I mean, our, our one percent's just in our regular budget. Sometimes people ask you, pay, pay teachers the bills. I mean, it's just in our general fund.
But you come back to that mentality of our community. We're rarely on the ballot. Other districts have a lot of conversations around operating your bond. So when we look at the mentality and we keep one percent use it, it's because we're not having to go to them for operating dollars. It's just the bond piece. So it's, it's that mentality of where that comes from is they don't see us on the ballot asking for the schools. So, sorry. Go ahead, Todd.
No, I'll, I'll try to finish it. So in twenty twenty three, this is, I mean, I thought, I thought this was interesting just to share with you. This is everyone's effective mileage rate. So that's going out, and if you look at the category, if someone passed like an eight mil levy back in the day, over time, that mileage comes down because the value goes up. So this is what's everyone's effective rate is. Because like out here, I'm just using Milford because they're close, forty one point five is their effective mileage. Our effective mileage is twenty four point six. We got our PI fund in our, in our, we're at the twenty mil floor. So we get twenty four point six. When this revow happened, this is why it was such an impact on our taxpayers, because we're at the floor. So when the value goes up, there wasn't any mileage to come down. So, because we're still at twenty four point six and we're still at twenty four point six. But what happened was, and let's just pick Milford, they were forty one point five effective mil. Now, what a mil is collected in Goshen versus a mil in Milford is night and day. Same thing if you took us to Comer's publicity, for example. What we get for mil is totally, totally different. But they have a lot of construction going on down there. So Milford went from forty one point five mils. They are now going to be setting at thirty point four. I mean, that's a huge number, but you guess what? They're getting the same amount of money because on their bond issue, you go out there and say, we need twenty million dollars. Like for us, we say twenty six million. So we get twenty six million. And then as the revow happens, and you need to get a million a year, for example, we still get a million a year, they just start adjusting it like that. This is just, I mean, unheard of numbers though. I mean, nothing really changes that much. But I wanted to share that with you on where we went. Because we was the third lowest, but now other ones who are not at the general, or at the twenty, or they had bond issues like C and E and Batavia. And you know, they built their product, their numbers went down. Thought that was interesting. I don't know if you guys got questions on that, because it's.
The last time our effective mileage changed was when the point five dropped off from the OFCC. So that was, right now, that was, you know, we had a bond issue. So, that was, right now, that was, you know, we had a bond issue on that was paid off in two thousand nineteen. The point five mil stayed on until the end of that third year, whatever it was at that time, twenty-seven years. That point five dropped off, which dropped our mil, our effective rate down point five. We have been at twenty-four point six since then.
Corey, I looked it up, it's twelve uh. Hold on, I can check that.
Well, and I can tell you out there, when you you start going into per pupil, there's the state report card gives you a number, then there's also a cup report, which gives you a number. They're apples and oranges, I mean, they're not even the same number, and off by a huge amount of money. I mean, like, a couple thousand, so. The only one thing I'll, just like, quickly, this is summation for you guys, is that, you know, there, the things to consider on down the road, like, you know, this, the joint, or the tax reform joint, are they gonna modify? When I'm talking about that, is like, right now, you know, you have home standard rollback for people. Is there gonna be some, some tax relief for people that are uh over fixed incomes, you know, and if they do fix it, are they gonna make it up to the schools, you know, I mean, if they let local? So, that's things we really have to uh to look at. The fair school funding formula, I mean, that's one, you watch the state legislature. I mean, like, you know, we're sitting here waiting to see what, how much they'll fund it. The current formula is just the same as anybody else. Uh, you know, our general fund, our expenditures increased due to the Esser funds. I mean, and in the past, that helped us maintain our balance, but now the Esser money is gone. So, what do we need to do is, you know, continue as a district? Do we keep tutoring? Do we keep lead? Do we keep aides? You know, that's big decisions that, you know, we'll need to be making there. The reevaluation has caused our local residents to pay more on real estate taxes, not more money. And I I can share that with you guys more on our five-year forecast, but it's like, how do we message that? How do we go out there and say, yeah, I know you, your tax is going up a thousand dollars a year, but we're not getting any more money, because it's a wash. And that's, that's a tough sell. I mean, to me, I can't even message it myself. It's like, you gotta be kidding me. Like, really, you're doing that? That doesn't make sense. Um, new construction will have an impact on our revenue, you know, like, you sit there and look, I mean, every other weekend, I drive through our subdivision, and these houses are coming, I mean, they're coming. So, you know, what are we gonna do? You know, one, get it, you get more value a house, but then, like I said, we're gonna have to bus them, we're gonna need a computer, they're gonna, you know, have needs, the same as anyone else.
I, Todd and I just, you know, they announced that the Lenton Road's a hundred million dollar project.
In total value?
Yes, that total valuation, it's about seven hundred thousand a year of the district. Let's picture one kid per three hundred houses. Let's picture thirty to one teacher ratio, just keep it simple. A new teacher's about seventy thousand dollars. That's ten teachers, or three hundred kids, the seven hundred. So, as you start looking at, how do you forecast that? Look at it. And it's, when he says revenue and expenses, it's not, you know, we're gonna have revenue, but there's gonna be expenses. So, it's just a simple way to look at that, new, one new neighborhood without income, or without the one percent.
It's a bus route.
Plus a bus route, maybe some sidewalks, who knows?
Are we gonna sit on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, I I the next bullet there, I did talk about, you know, we put off a few things that we're gonna be doing as far as our parking lots, you know, we're gonna be seeing that. I mean, growth is coming, you know, we're gonna do modulars, we'll move the board office, great configuration of the space. So, there's decisions that, you know, everyone's had to be looking at, what is the best thing to do? I I did put this on here, and this is just, I mean, I know it's kind of difficult to read, but, you know, when I talk about our situation, you know, right next door, we have Clint Essie's making cuts, you know, they come there, their income tax did not renew, they had an income tax that was on the ballot, it lost. And so, they're talking, I I have not seen exactly all their cuts, but it's on that little, uh, there's a link there, it gets you some more information. Mount Healthy, you know, their Esser funds are gone, they're cut to sixty-seven teachers, uh, thirteen, basically aides, port staff in their upcoming budget. Mount Healthy, they get hit a lot with uh enrollment also, right?
They're, so that, I mean, they have a couple different problems, but one of them's vouchers as well, because they lost kids and their enrollment, the voucher piece that the state of Ohio is funding, get them some, but then they'll also Esser on the backend.
Is that the school that was just getting taken over by the state?
Yeah, and so we had Mount Healthy, and then I I'm sure you guys seen, you know, with it being right next door, you know, unfortunately, Milford, they're uh cutting about three million dollars, they're under budget right now, I mean, over budget now, that they have to look at. And, you know, and and I hate that, because like now, I feel like public schools, you know, we're competing with broken schools, because there's so much money going, you know, you're, they're kind of in there, so you hate seeing this. I mean, me personally, I hate seeing that happen to our public school grounds, because that's just.
But the things that we're offering here, we're not being impacted by that. And that's the thing, we're competing. Competing for kids, no matter how you look at it. We keep these programs up, our families stay here, they're happy with it, they're not looking elsewhere. I might say it that way, but we're doing what's best for kids, but we're also competing, let's not kid ourselves on them. Yeah.
Yeah, so. So, really, I I just brought this slide back up, and just to, just let you know, I mean, we really look at needs first, and we try to be proactive on what is our biggest needs, that becomes the biggest items that we may need to do on our purchase, and you, we just need to be watching on that if you're on the budget, so. Their feedback. I, I thank you, you answered every question I've had, as far as, I know, I called you once last year, when Ross was going through their thing, one of my coworkers come up to me, and he knew that uh, that uh, you know, Ross was struggling, he, you know, I was on school board, and he's like, hey, what do you think our problem is? And you, you look, you know, kinda, I just wanna say, you know, like, hey, we're not gonna get in the same situation Ross is in, right? We're not gonna get in the same situation Mount Healthy's in. So, we're learning from mistakes of other districts as well, I mean, as far as, at least from my point of view. I mean, I I wanna understand what they're going through. And I know that goes way back from when we built this high school. You know, I mean, I, you know, Little Miami built a high school before we did, right? Loveland, and I know uh, our uh, our team went out and looked at these other districts, looked at, you know, lessons learned, hey, where did you guys, where'd you go? Where were your overrun, your cost overrun and everything? What did you, yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's good, you know, we can learn from the mistakes of others, too. Make sure we don't get in the same situation. Yeah, so we built this high school, we, we didn't put as much fluff into it as Little Miami did and the errors or some other districts. You know, we built this high school, we could expand on to it easily, yeah. Uh, I I think you bring up a great point, and you know, one of the things that, you know, I I've been here twenty-four years, hard to believe. Brian's my third superintendent. You know, I mean, we went to have that continuity, so, like, over time, when you learn stuff, you know, I don't know about the other districts, the situation there, but they get a new superintendent, a new treasurer every two to three years. Where's your priority? I mean, you're probably just trying to survive, where now, we can get into weeds, what, what's, what's making these impacts? What can we do to make a difference? Because we know, we don't have the, you know, we're not cutting like these other districts, that's, I mean, we're down to like, you know, smaller things, I guess you would say, because they, they really have some big decisions to make, which is terrible. So, I do think our continuity, I mean, our staff's been around for, you know, a couple years now, I know, I mean, we're cranking, so I I think that's good, so.
I think.
Point on you.
Yeah, I think one thing that we have to look at is the ordinance of district, and, you know, Brian and I touched on it yesterday's. I I I would like to see our open enrollment, I think we need to have a discussion about that, making some decisions about that. Just for the simple fact that, you know, almost every report that was given to us talked about space, you know, and the bond didn't pass. We were growing, and so, I would, I guess I would like to see some sort of plan of what it would look like if we were to cut open enrollment minus teachers, you know, administrative kids, uh, a few years out versus if we didn't have that, and kind of how that would affect the, you know.
Or phasing it out versus, I mean, yeah.
Right, but we're, we're, we're to the point where if we have these students come in, and we're still accepting students, which we are, we really need to listen to what's being, you know, said to us.
I think.
Not only the teachers, but also from, from the community as well. Uh, so we, we really have to take a, a look at that and see what we can do about it, because if we're already over, and and depending on at what point we ask for a new bond, and what, when it does get voted in, we, the, the need is right now. We have, you know, we have no space, so the need is now. And so, we've really gotta take a look at that, how that affects us financially, if we were to take that away. I get we're phasing it.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we do. Well, that, that's true. And so, we, but we send a different message also when we accept students in the middle of the year, when we're phasing it, but then we don't. So, we really need to, the perception is reality to a lot of folks, but we really need to see if we need the space now, we're not gonna get it, potentially for two to three years, depending on the decision we make and and vote on. We really need to look at open enrollment as, there's no better time, if folks wanna come to Goshen, than right now. We've got a thousand-plus homes, you know, coming to, and and it would be nice to have those, I don't want them to leave, but we've gotta make tough decisions that if they wanna be a part of the Warriors, you know, going forward, that they need to move here, you know, so.
I think you're seeing some of that, too, right now.
Sorry, and we are seeing, yeah, but I think at some point, we need to stop the open enrollment part and and give the room to the students that we have, you know, currently, because we are running out of space, and that's been, you know, the, the teacher survey, it's been on all these reports, it's what we preached during the bond. And so, I just wanna, just make sure we can look at that, and and of course, obviously, it'll be a tough decision, but we have to do what's right for students here, the parents, you know, those types.
And I think you, we have to, looking at all that, I agree, we absolutely need to look at it, right? We need to look at what our true open enrollment numbers look like now, what a phase-out process looks like. And I think we're gonna get into that here shortly, in terms of huge, like, looking at what we need to do in the future. Um, and in addition to that, the impact, right? So, like, if we look at how much money we're making off of open enrollment right now, we don't wanna cut a program like Ascend Academy if we know the benefits are.
But we, yeah, I agree with that.
Right? So, we gotta look at the big picture of all of that, and then make the tough decisions, you're right.
I would, I would also say that we, we need to, those are gonna be tough decisions, right? And we do have an increase in in values and different things in the one percent, uh, in the property tax. And so, you know, currently, we've got two hundred and forty-two open enrolled students, and I think it was over a hundred students of teachers. You know, we get one point three million, you know, from the state for the open enrolled students, so you divide that out, we're looking at about fifty-five hundred dollars a student right now, which is actually a little bit less if you had the two, the teachers, students in there. And by all means, I am supportive of the, the teachers, open ride, supportive of that, but, uh, you know, that's five hundred and fifty thousand, you know, there, so we need to look at the cost of how much we're paying for a pupil.
Absolutely.
You know, versus how much we're getting, uh, and then do assessments, the new one percent that's coming, the new property taxes of all the homes being built.
Space and everything.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's what we're getting ready to get into.
I'm not gonna get too much into the enrollment piece, but some solutions. The one thing I would say is we do that, and I think I've said this. I, Massey, if you look at that, the causes for projected deficits are multifaceted according to the district, including the loss of open enrollment revenue that they made that decision on. So, I just wanna make sure, as I've said that, with that funding formula and the pieces that are so new to us, dripping, you know, dropping to the guarantee is not a good thing. So, and that's driven by enrollment. So, that's where I say, we have to look at this, I'm, I'm a hundred percent direct us to look at it, we're gonna look at it and see how we can approach that, what it does. Plankly cut, I mean, you know, there's some of that that's still kind of that unknown as we look at.
Oh, right, there's a lot of unknown, but we gotta do what's right, but.
Sure, but I think it's, yes, and I think we have a little time to look at it, and I'd hope to share that a little bit. I'm not gonna get into a ton of enrollment stuff right now, but next steps.
I guess I would just be cautious, saying we got time, because I don't think we do, we don't have time. We've gotta, at some point, make decisions, we gotta talk about it, just kind of, you know, do what's right.
Massey just flipped the switch, just stopped the enrollment thing.
I wanna, I, that's where I said, I wanna investigate with them. I have not sat down with, that's a new superintendent there, and Richmond did it as well, so.
Richmond did, and it was.
Yeah, well, they were just, they were, Richmond, when they, when the nurses being then, they were having a, that's what they recommend them to do, because they had a lot of open enrollment kids. But now, with the funding formula, and I mean, and we can look at all that, but like, you know, if we, if we do that, what's that gonna drop? Because it's, it's now, and it's butts in the chair, or it used to be, where's the kids sleep? And so, you'd have a D-Duck on open enrollment, left, and an income if they can. But now, it's butts in the chair. So, like, if we cut, and I'm just like that, I mean, that's gonna take X amount of dollars away. Is that driving us down to the guarantee? I don't know, but I mean, you know.
That's the stuff we have to look at, right?
We have to look at that.
We wanna evaluate how, how we make the decision.
Yeah, we need to, we need to understand that.
Yeah, I'll look at that. I mean, I, I mean, that's a great, good point, and because really, I can tell you, like, just off the top of my head, school classes, it will be, that will not save us a dime, because we make them come. Cafeteria-wise, it won't save us anything, because we got four new building, we still have building secretaries, you know, I mean, so, we can look through and make some assumptions on, you know, I mean. Okay.
All right, we are at adjournment time. See ya. We've, we've got the facilities update, and this is broke out into two chunks, right? I wanna reflect a little bit on, because we haven't met since March nineteenth. So, I wanna reflect on the results a little bit, and then kind of ask you, I am gonna roll through three options here that we've looked at as a team. I'm gonna ask you, you've got posted notes on your table. I ask you not to interrupt me until I get done with the three, and then we'll talk about them, because I think they, they mold together. I think it'll, we get down a rabbit hole, we may not get to option two, so I just wanna think about that. But the results, we know. Sixty-three, thirty-six here in Claremont County, um, did not win a township. Or a precinct, I'm sorry. Um, twenty-seven percent voter turnout, right, in that election.
Hold on, Brian, I am gonna interrupt.
You can interrupt on this section.
You want us to write our questions on this as we have?
Well, just write them wherever you wanna write them. I just gave you posted notes, you write your questions down as I'm going through.
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure I'm following directions.
I wanted to give you a spot to do it. Yeah, so, twenty-seven percent turnout, um, and then Harlan was, I mean, obviously, we have a smaller voter base out there. I did not get the turnout, because to look through Warren County data with them, I don't know how many exactly that we have there. Here's what I wanna say, this was not a Goshen issue at the state level. There was a twenty-two percent turnout in the state of Ohio for that March primary. On that left there, that is levy, uh, levy date, so districts out that were asking for dollars. Only sixteen percent of additional dollars, new dollars, was approved statewide. And I'll, I have some numbers behind this, what that sixteen percent. Renewal was only at seventy percent. So, if somebody was asking for a renewal, and you look at historics there, historically, it was ninety-one percent on renewals and about thirty-six percent on additional dollars. Um, so this wasn't just us, this was statewide. I think we have to look at November twenty twenty-four and know that it's gonna be a big turnout. And it's gonna be a hotly contested turnout, I think we know. I think as districts have to look at this, the big pieces to get through the partisan messages, to get the school information out there, why we need it, is gonna be tough. Um, on top of that, you know, we need to develop a, a pretty critical message and a, and a pretty targeted message to our voters. So, when I said that, just to put some numbers to it, operating levies, um, emergency new was two of them, there were two up and unpassed. Emergency renewal was twenty-one, twenty-eight, seventy-five percent. Current expenses, new, uh, four of twelve. Current expenses renewed, uh, four out of five, uh, for the total of new monies, at four out of twenty-one for operating. Come to the bond side, or permanent improvement, or a combination thereof, which was not us, ours is strictly hitting this bond piece. Three of seven bond issues passed in the state. We know that one locally, King's got it, um, for, for theirs here locally. Not sure where I didn't dig down into it. So, when you look at, you know, forty-two percent of permanent improvement or bond levies passed across the state. So, again, not just us, um, but I think we know why. So, I have an inkling, a little bit of it, uh, there's probably many facets into this, to be able to get into a voter's head that day. I would say that we have to understand, as Todd just went through, that the rising costs of everything has hit households, and those on fixed incomes hard. And they have one opport, you know, they have one timey to schools. And they have one opport, you know, they have one time either schools or police fire that they can say no more taxes. And I agree with them. I think when we did this as a board of education, October, November, there were rumors of property tax increases. There was also, hey, we're going to fix it and phase this in, and then it stopped. And the general assembly has done nothing with it because they were focused on a primary. So I think, you know, the rising cost, we have to understand that it's hit our bottom line too. You can see it, the inflation that we're getting hit with on just operating, the construction cost as well. So we want to provide a quality education. But it can only be at the cost of what the residents are willing or can pay. I'm not going to say willing, what they can pay right now. So with that said, I'm going to take us through, and this is where I had the. Right on your posted notes or write your thoughts down. Get a drink. What options do we have? We've kind of, and we're going to review a timeline if we take that, you know, one option or two option and what the timelines are. And I want you guys at the end, I'm going to give you time to ask me questions. And I don't think you have to give us an ultimate direction, but we need a little bit of a direction of what should be our next step as we start to go out and research and look at what we need to do. So that's where I say I'm going to throw three things at you, but then I want to have some discussions about what that next would be. So, fate, option one. We vetted phase one, we knew it solved our problem. We can run phase one back out on a November 24 or November 25 ballot. What we know, and I'm not estimates. When we vetted this project with Alvar and Scan Scott on 26 million, inflation numbers that they gave us at that time, inflation's gone down a little bit. So this cost may go down a little bit, but it wouldn't set 26 million to get the same project. It's 27 and a quarter. So knowing that, action steps if we were to take this app, this, this step. We would need to continue to monitor the impact of growth and the impact on class sizes. Gather facility committee and steering committee input. I think we need input from people if we were to go this route. Research new construction costs because as I said, those, those may have gone down a little bit or increased a little bit. Millages, the village rate and the interest rate. Obviously, we've got that USDA loan that we'll know more about there. It doesn't, just means that the, if we were to do something, we get, you know, lower interest. We have applied for a $2.8 million grant to expand workforce, healthcare initiatives and K-12 education. Would that have an impact on that ask? If we got it, I pushed the governor the other day when I was with him that we really could use it, so, you know. And then probably at some point, survey the community parents and staff. I'm not sure what we asked that they didn't tell us at the ballot box though. So I think we have to really think about what that is. We need to think about the November 24 election considerations as well. Fire any MS, you know, they, they have, theirs is a replacement, it has to be done. General versus presidential. And then we really need to watch property tax reform bills that are out there. As to what that's going to do for our residents. I want to review quickly with you, if you were to, you know, if we were to go in one of these directions, if you wanted to put something on in November, we have to decide in June. You guys remember, this is a process to get to that point. June is kind of the decision at a board meeting that we're going with X amount of dollars in this project. And then we start to work with bond council and the state about how to get on the ballot. If you were to do something in May, we would have to decide at our December 9th board meeting to do something in May. So just the timelines for you to keep in mind. Option two, examine a similar phase one plan with a locally funded component. Action steps for that. Continue to monitor the impact of growth and impact on class sizes. I think we still need to gather some facilities committee and steering committee input. Request new construction cost, millage rates and interest rates stays the same. But I think this last, this next one is look at the financial ability to locally fund a portion of phase one project from the general fund and PI revenues. Is it possible without exceeding, you know, you look at those expenditures and revenues and what do we do? And then we still have to consider, no matter what, other elections and other things going on around us. I think also, if we looked at this option, when we say something locally, we need to examine other funding structures. Is there something else we can do rather than just taking a lump sum out of a general fund? Are there alternatives to that that we could do? All right, option three. We pause the ballot request and start to find short-term solutions to address the growth in the community. Those first two bullets don't change. We continue to monitor, gather facilities committee feedback, but are there short-term options? This is where we need to start looking at what are our short-term options? And then when we do a short-term map, you know, option, what are the impacts on academics? And what are the increase, what are the impacts on operating expenses when we do those? Probably examine modulators, movement of grade levels on campus. Examine space off-campus possibly for the board office so that we could provide space at Mark Cook. Maybe that's us renting something, or maybe that's us in a modular. Not sure what that is, think we need to examine that. And then we need to examine probably the removal of programs to provide core academic space. We get to that point where we've got some great programs in for kids, but if we need space for just a math classroom, IT may have to go away. You name it, there's special programs that we have in spaces. Just have to probably get rid of those are tough. Because they're good for kids and the whole kid and all the things we're trying to prepare these kids for, for a portrait of a graduate walking out of here. But that's some of those decisions. And then we just need to continue to monitor enrollment, home sales, property tax reform. And discuss, I think, you know, that last one, when we make a decision, discuss the major items of emphasis moving forward that we need to better communicate to our community for our future requests. Whoa. Lastly, this is not an option, but, and I don't want this to be a golden parachute. I want to explain this to you real quick. Every time we have been on the ballot, we've called OFCC. Got to remember, 610 school districts. They move through the school districts and public universities for, and they allocate dollars in that biennial budget for OFCC projects. Todd and I called them for another time just to say, hey. And I don't know, I think it's like anything else at the state level, you have to ask the right person or the right question. So Todd and I kind of walked through with them, our district's growing, we've got a thousand houses coming up. Are we missing anything from the state level as far as state being able to support? Our growth with facilities? She said, yes, there is a clause out there in Ohio Revised Code that per districts experiencing exceptional enrollment growth. That there's an option there. However, you have to meet 115% of the 1999 master facility plan that we did with them, which at that time was 2,860 is what she, we didn't, this was, we've got a lot more conversations to have with them. And that's where I say I'm surface level right now because it was a 10-minute conversation and she couldn't go any further with it because she was not the expert in that. But essentially 2,860 kids, three consecutive years. Year one, we call them, we've hit the threshold. Year two, have we sustained? Year three, I believe, you're not, like, right now we're 104 in line. I don't think there's any line at that point. I think they, in year two and three, they plan with you, come down, look at your facilities and look at what you need. And essentially, remember OFCC, they look at what you need, they look at the growth, and they say, here's what, the amount of money that we would provide Goshen. Here's what your local taxpayer then would have to pay on top of that. When we did the high school and all the 1999 issue, it was an 80/20. State 80%, Goshen residents 20%. Todd and I asked them, does our demographic look similar? Based on our valuation, which is why we're 100, number 104 in that list right now. They said your demographics look very similar. Can't guarantee it's 80/20, but again, she was very surface level. I don't want this to be a golden parachute because 3,200 kids is still 400 kids of growth. I don't know that we have space for that, but I think it needs to be a consideration. I think what we said when we said phase one and then phase two. Phase one, we knew was going to be locally, and that's why we did it small. Phase two was going to have some state dollars in it, we hoped. I don't think it's a hope now. I think there is an opportunity there. But I think we have to research this more, we have to examine the opportunity as we look at this. Could impact option one, it could impact option two, it could impact option three. Not sure where it fits, but it's a piece that we need to further investigate. And I hope that I get the same girl that we talked to the next time we call up there. So, feedback time. I just put a couple of questions up there just to say any options we did not cover.
Option one, no.
Okay.
Does everybody agree with that? Option one, not go back on if there are any.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Corey.
I, I mean, I can't see running for another few years. I mean, we're getting nowhere with it. How long is it going to take before, you know, our economy recovers, inflation comes down some? More comfortable with the economy? Plus, a lot of people like to see more houses already go in before they would approve a bond issue. You're like, you know, they're paying their share. Yeah, so, yeah. But again, that's if it's, if we run it two years from now and then if it does pass, then two years it's billed. It's billed, and that's, you know, four years from today, that would be. So that's a long ways out, so.
Well, and I think, listen, I think that we heard that, you know, in the conversations we have, whether it's coffee shop or just, you know, passing. I think everything that you saw this morning academically, we try to be proactive. Yeah, because when we get reactive, it's difficult. And I think the district has tried to be proactive in 19 and then 22, and then this passed, I mean.
But there's things to be active in that. We're waiting on those, those guys in Columbus to do something. You know, there's a couple of different house bills, one you spoke of, we're phasing that tax increase, which. Yeah, too late, yeah. Another one that they've been sitting on is that one for the senior citizens tax increase. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I think if you're over seven years old, you've been in a house for 20 years longer, you pay the property tax increase. I mean, I don't understand how that just passes the line colors. It should have, it hasn't gone again, I don't believe, you know, I mean, so, you know.
Well, that joint property tax committee is starting to heat up there, and they're coming out with some outcomes, plucking at a bunch of different options. So I assume somewhere in there will say that joint committee, that's a big recommendation.
It's a big thing too, it's just protecting our, our senior population from these tax increases. I mean, that, that hits hard, you know, because that's the town I grew up in and, you know, my, all my schoolmates' parents still living here, you know, a huge percentage of us still live in here. I mean, that's how we like to protect them.
I think a few things that I would like to look at is, I would like to compare phase two and three if possible. And like, what does the dollar amount look like for phase two to be locally funded with general funds? And with some consideration of like the open enrollment numbers and a phase out plan? What the impact is financially with that? Similar to phase three, right? I think phase three, we're going to hit those pain points that I think people need to feel and see. You all do a great job making things as nice as possible, I think, for our teachers and staff and students, honestly. You make things look great even when they're tight, right? And we're really, really creative in how we offer things. I hate the thought of cutting any kind of programming that we're doing for students. And I get it. I get that there are people out there who think you don't need to go above and beyond, but I like to be exceptional. I don't like to lose and I like to be the best. And I think Goshen has been that for some time, right? People move here because we have low taxes and we still have great things to offer. But, you know, if phase three with the possibility of some support, I worry if we do a phase two and it's a Band-Aid.
Option two.
I mean, option two, sorry, yeah. I worry if we do an option two and it's a Band-Aid and we still have growth coming and we have to pass something else. I don't want to do that, quite frankly. I think we need to get to a point where maybe the, we can get some state support and we need a new school because that's the direction we're headed. Right now, all the additions that we're talking about is just a Band-Aid.
So I think what I hear you saying is, if you looked at option two, doing a phase one with some locally funded Band-Aid, let's say it's instead of 2.9, it's 1 mil. And it's 13 million instead of 26 million, but we fund a couple million here or there, we're still on the ballot.
No.
Asking for money with that phase two or option two. I think your point is you're going to have to vote on one thing if you did an option two, where you put something back on the ballot that's lower, less.
No, I like option three where we build what we need to build for a long-term plan. But there are things that we fund internally to make it work until we get there, right? Whether we have to move some grades buildings, whether we have to put some sidewalks in so that the kids closest can walk, whether we do some expansion that we can afford to do. I mean, I don't know what that, I, those are the ones I'm asking. I'm saying we need to, we need to know those numbers. What do the numbers look like if we phase out open enrollment? And what's that impact on our district until we get to the point that we need to build? I don't know.
I'm on the same, I'm on the same thought. Process is you two to three years before we put it on. I'm going to go back to stop the open enrollment, just for a simple fact, it's going to open up seats, 100%. It's going to open up seats. Right now, you know, with open enrollment, we're sitting at about 2,900 students. Take the 242 away, you know, now we're down to 26, 50, 27. That gives us room for the students that we projected, the 300 students that we projected to come in. I agree with you 100% that we stop putting Band-Aids on stuff. We give the time for the economy to come back.
You say that, hold on, I, I'm hearing you. And I'm, I'm, I'm listening. I'm just not at the point of like, you just rip the Band-Aid off about open enrollment without doing a financial assessment.
No, 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 this is my, this would be my plan after looking at that.
If you get a financial assessment.
But at some point, this is the people's checkbook, not ours. One is ours, we're taxpayers, but we need to look at it as like it is our personal paycheck, our checking account. So we, so we, there, there may be tough calls that we have to make. You know, you go out and get a loan, now you've got to adjust your lifestyle. You know, and it's stuff that we can't help, there's stuff that car insurance, health, or homeowner's insurance, that all stuff is going up. And that's stuff that we just can't, it's people we can't stop. It's a fixed thing that we just can't stop. So I agree with you, two to three option, option three, two to three years. Alleviate the space now with, with really taking a hard look at open enrollment. Because that, that does drop us down to the 2,600, 2,700 true. I think, you know, moving the board office, I think even taking a look at, at, I know we talked about Health Source, but taking a look at what that looks like for space if we need it. You know, I just want to make sure that, that we're continually looking at what's best for students and if what's best for students are doing some of these things. Like you, I hate to take away, you know, anything that involves the kids because they, they find that, that niche which they click.
I think the thing we have to be careful of why we need to do the financial assessment is because we take some of that away, right? Because it's, then we don't have the butts in seats at the current time. So if we phase it out as they phase in, we keep the current butts in seats. And so we get the funding to be able to continue to maintain those programs.
But we're already over capacity though.
The butts in seats though is what's funding us.
But we're, right, but correct, but we've got new revenues coming. So we've got the new, you know, that stuff. The 550,000 or so, that stays, that's those are teachers' kids. That, 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 that might stays, right? And so the new assessments that are coming, 1% that when people move in. Also the money from the state.
And the state funding is probably going to go down, so we're waiting.
Correct, but, but we have to remember too, that we have to live within our means and we have to make decisions within that. So, so you're getting, so you're losing the open enrollment, some of it, you're losing 600,000 or so, 700,000, somewhere in there. But we're making that up with the, the 1% that we're getting from the, from the folks that work in the community that live in the community. Because we're not getting that right now for open enrollment students. We're also, we'll also be getting the properties when folks move in, you know, too, then we're getting that money as well. So that's what I want to see with open room, without, and some sort of projection. Because right now, we can't continue just to, even if we say we're phasing it out, what are we looking, at what point do we start? Are we gonna accept kindergartners, you know, for coming up this year? Are we really gonna take that approach and say, are we gonna truly phase it out? And to me, phase it out means we don't start.
We don't take any new.
Correct, we have what we have.
And that's what, when I say phase out, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Phase out, because as we phase out and graduate open enrollment kids, there are kids moving in. And so then we don't lose the funding of butts and seats.
Right, we're gonna, we're still gonna lose it because we're gonna have graduating, we're not adding.
Right, but we should add them because people are moving in.
I'm okay with the phasing approach, I'm just saying, if we're gonna do a phasing approach, don't accept kids in the middle of the year.
That's what that looks like.
Yeah, I think that's a rest, you have that kind of plan and what that looks like financially.
I think the big thing is, too, and I, I total put this together, and I think when you look at, you can't just say it's year one, it's five-year forecast. You lose a million year one, it's five million off the budget in five years. So it's not just.
Well, I would like to see the revenue that we're getting over five years, you can't say we lose it. We're also gaining it somewhere else as well.
Hopefully it's fast.
He's had to know, knowing what we do know is what lose.
Right, we still know how quick. That's, I think, where the.
I think we're all on the same page. What we're saying is, we want to look at a budgetary plan of what it would look like. And if we looked at our kids right now in open enrollment, say, how many open enrollment kids are we gonna lose in twenty twenty-four, right? And how many open enrollment kids will we graduate in twenty twenty-three? And how many open enrollment? And what that would look like if we're not accepting? And then what the anticipated growth is based on those moving into the district, right? We have that out there. And over time, what that looks like in terms of the current budget and what we know what it looks like. I mean, I get there's gonna be changes from year to year, biannually, right? But right now, if that continued, what would that look like in terms of finances?
And I still think, you know, too, the good thing is, too, I think that when these folks move into these new subdivisions, I think the voting will flip. And I think we're so fearful of what it looks like without that stuff, but in two to three years, we're gonna get that flipped and get that bond approved or whatever.
Possibly.
Possibly. But we can't live like that.
I mean, I know, maybe we can't say, whoa, it's gonna flip, I mean, it's possibly, yeah, but again, that's just the plan, I mean, just.
Well, I mean, I think the reality is, is too, by then we understand, like, we're not putting a Band-Aid. We need a school at that point and we're, we're planning for the future. We're planning for what we need then and not what we need right now, and then we're gonna outgrow it and need something more, right? I don't want to be in the district that's asking for something every few years because we're continually outgrowing it. I want to plan for, I want to continue to be the proactive planning type of district that you guys are right now, right? That we're doing right now. So I think we're all on the same page, right? Phase three.
To your point, to your point also, I hate to see this, but when folks start feeling the pain of something, you know, whether it's driving them to school, having to pick them up, doing this and that, they're more apt to really listen to what we truly were saying, like, we need this. It's not a one, it truly is a need.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think our whole voters were.
Good direction.
Yes, no voters were that.
We want to look at what option three is and the consideration of what finances look like with the phase.
Yep. Okay. All right, moving forward, because we're not done. We do have a capital plan that I want Troy to go over. As we've said, tornado hit, we stopped our capital projects. I mean, our billings, as we take good cares, good care of them. And obviously, we need to for the foreseeable future. So we've put together a capital plan over the next three years as we look at things that we had put on hold because of the tornado, or we had put on hold because it would have been part of the expansion of the building. So I'm gonna have Troy go through that piece of it.
So I try and be as quickly, as quick as possible. As we look at a three-year capital plan, I mean, I think it's very important that you understand where a lot of the big budget ticket items are going, going toward. And that would be within our first one, and I'll kind of talk about the first, I'll talk about the first one over the next three years. So that's our M core, and that's basically what you're sitting in, your HVAC. Which is, over the years, over the past ten years, our automated logic controls or our ALCs have saved us millions of dollars. So in a nutshell, those are all the computerized little parts in classrooms that control opening valves, closing valves, opening vents, closing vents, all automatically so that you can maintain the optimal temperature in that classroom or the room that you might be in that building. M core has evaluated our twenty-three-year-old system. And after twenty-three years, you start to get wear and tear on your facility, your controls. So just like at home, if you're sitting on that thirty-year-old furnace, you're hoping and praying that that baby's gonna make it through one more. Yeah, and it didn't. And when it didn't, you said, oh, my gosh. So basically, what we are looking at is with our ALCs, which is our automatic logic controls in the classrooms, we're looking at about one or two more years before potential catastrophic failure is going to occur, okay? Now, with our direct digital controls, which are all the controls that are on our heating and cooling water systems, so our hot and our cold water that cools and heats everything, our major components, they are projected in about two or three years before catastrophic failure is going to start to occur. So this three-year plan incorporates or looks at replacing all of that. So in a nutshell, you'll see here, GHS and GMS, we're gonna take care of all of this coming summer. We're gonna take care of all those controls in the classroom in those two buildings. The following year, as you will see, we're gonna take care of it in the other two buildings. And then in plan three, we're gonna take care of those DDCs, which are all the controls on our major components in the buildings. And we'd be able to address all of those components in one summer, those major components. So in a nutshell, we've kind of broken that down over three years and phased it over all four of the buildings. Obviously, as you've heard today numerous times, in realm two, safety, I alluded earlier about the door contacts that were at Mark Cook, freshly installed, newly installed. We are looking at, in coordination with that Bureau of Work and Compensation grant, obtaining electronic contacts on all our buildings, which would be a tremendous upgrade. Why would it be a tremendous upgrade in realm of safety? At any given time, one would know or one would be alerted of a door that is jarred or a door that's not making contact. So it's not a physical person or police officer seeing that door, testing that door, there's an alarm that goes off. At any given time, I can, anybody could immediately lock the entire building electronically. You could do it remotely, all of those things. So that is something that we are looking at within this first year, and that RFP is out there, obtaining more funding there, or bids there, I should say. A huge asset of, and as Todd mentioned earlier, I mean, when you have fourteen million dollars in roofs, you gotta take care of them, okay? So you are going to see our preventative maintenance plan there, which basically takes infrared scanning, which we'll be doing this summer, and predicts for us building-wise and section-wise what we should be addressing next in realm two, the replacement or the repair part of our roofs.
Which, real quick, sorry, which roofs are you, are you talking about, like, all of them or?
All of them. So this summer, what we're gonna be looking at would be, and what we are technically looking at, and we did not touch during the renovate, during the roof repair on high school, would be the resealing of the skylight, which is not, right out here in the main part, which has not been touched, that's a brand-new construction. So this is going to be resealing and recoding just that skylight. Then, we are going to have infrared scanning that'll occur on all buildings. Even though this is a brand-new roof on certain sections, you have other sections that are not new. So they will come in, we infrared scan different buildings, and that gives you a prediction of what needs to be addressed when, so you can plan financially for that. Does that answer that question?
That makes sense, yeah, I was just, what roofs are new, just the high school?
There are sections.
Not the whole high school.
Not the whole high school.
What kind of five-year roof, like Garland, like Big Macau? So we know what years all the roofs were done.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And what year we need to start looking.
Okay, that makes sense. I appreciate that. Send him a couple of the shots they had, that was after the post-tornado recovery, maybe send him to Corey, some of the reports you ran, Todd. You know, the updates on the roofs.
We have a five-year plan, we can share with him on that night.
It's all sectioned out. And same thing is you start to look at blacktop and blacktop repair. As Todd mentioned earlier, we put a lot of things off in realm two, you know, bond issue and what was gonna happen, et cetera, et cetera. But we are working with Four Seasons to come up with a plan. So what does a plan encompass? It's looking at your entire campus, it's looking at things, blacktop-wise, traffic-wise, that probably will not be affected by future growth. Ie, I'm just making it up, warrior way is always gonna be there and it's always gonna probably be a thorough fair. So let's address that probably in section one. In section one, as far as a total resurface and/or a crack fill and repair. So that is currently being set up to have that plan in effect of rotating sections with our blacktop, blacktop maintenance. Tennis court repair or resurface. Our tennis courts, for you avid tennis players and have been over there all the time, are in desperate need of some repair. Or. Replacement. And you can see there a quite a cost difference between repair and replacement. I am trying to currently get a lot better estimates on longevity with repair as opposed to resurfacing. Because as you can see, those are two tremendous amounts there and trying to weigh out which is more beneficiary to head. Our parking lot replacement, as I mentioned earlier, that is something that is constantly on a rotating schedule as far as getting those fixtures replaced. Our MC playground, you'll see this in year one, you'll also see it in year two. Both of those structures are main structures, I should say, at Mark Cook and at Spalding are pushing that twenty-two-year-old phase. And unfortunately, with playground equipment, manufacturers will not touch each other's equipment. And the manufacturer who put those are, who put those structures in place is no longer in business. So there is a budgeted portion there that would be addressed towards Mark Cook's playground. Our GHS bleacher seat replacement in year one, this is where we're making a budget conscientious decision to replace certain sections, our obsolete bleachers in the high school. And I can't believe I'm saying that with the new high school because it's not that new. So in other words, we will be replacing all of the auxiliary bleachers with brand-new bleacher seats. Those seats there that don't get used that often will be then used to patch all the sections in the main bleachers, which are no longer available. So that will be a.
So it's a lot cheaper to replace the back of Hillary Gym's seats than the entire gym. Use all those to fix, you can't order seats for any of those.
We tried, I tried to have the guys at work print the seats, the ones that have holes in them and stuff. But they don't have that capability yet. We've got four million dollars worth of equipment, so. But he did save the print, so maybe if we get a new printer in the future, we can do that.
So as we move to year two, some of that stuff already covered, hopefully to suffice where we're at in your minds. The first one there is the M core, our HVAC that I referenced, our blacktop work. The fourth one down there, in our second year of planning, we will be addressing, in conjunction with Facility Committee talking that, some of the stadium lighting, which as far as, there is a technical formula for everything in facilities. And for those of you that don't know, our candlelight on our football field is absolutely horrible. And we will be looking at replacing those with the stadium LED sound or LED lighting. We have also in year two, we'll be looking along with, in conjunction with talking with the Facilities Committee, stadium sound system, replacing that. You will see there on the second last line item, the SES playground, which is the allotted money for that playground structure. And then in year two starts to, we also are budgeting in that movement of grade levels because as we grow and as we've talked all morning, there are costs, there are costs that are associated with moving students even within your own building. So what does this mean? Does this mean we have costs for a restructured HVAC, restructured lighting, restructured fire system in a particular building, a building of a wall in between classrooms? That could be quite a little bit of a unknown cost as those needs start to arise with given numbers of students. And in the third year there, the only, I think, really not seeing anything else, it's a continuation of what I've mentioned in year two. And again, you'll see at the end there with possibilities, I mean, it's obviously an unknown as you're well aware of.
So year three really gets us back to what we've done prior to the tornado. You're really looking at your roofs, your blacktop, your infrastructure. Just got a lot of catch-up from three-so years of not doing a lot of continuing.
And it is, I mean, it is, I mean, it's just like your.
You got, your workman's comp's forty thousand for those door contacts. If we can get grants for it, we go out and seek grants for it. Yes, but it would be general fund revenue, and that's where we've really gotta be comfortable. Top side, yes, we can do these things, especially if we start seeing any decreases in revenue. So it's just, right now, yes, it looks like we could have. The big one, obviously, on there is M core. I think you have, with, with that HVAC, if we don't do that and system shut down and get mold, you get problems that are a lot more expensive. It's definitely one we've gotta look at.
Well, it's also energy savings.
Yep.
It's energy savings, that's, yes.
Yep.
I think, though, looking at a three-year plan for the facilities, it just reiterates how well we keep our buildings, like the upkeep of our buildings and stuff. And, I mean, somehow, there's some, in some ways, it's to our detriment a little bit because people don't see them as being replaced. So, I mean, it's, it's great that we are so conscientious of all that, but.
Very well stated, Julie.
Remember, we said people didn't feel like green.
I wasn't picturing that.
Oh, jeez, yeah, that was like.
All right, any other feedback on the capital plan? So. I'm not gonna look, I know why this was a full-day retreat in the past. I do a hundred percent appreciate you guys being here, my admin that could stick, being here. I think this is a very healthy process every year for us to get together because we can only share so much, you know, at a business meeting because it's a business meeting agenda. But, you know, to have a meeting like this where it's a little bit of a work session, to be able to get through some of the nitty-gritty we ran over by forty-five minutes, it's not as sore, but we said at twelve o'clock in German, it's only forty-five minutes, blame it on Stephanie Walker.
Supposed to do someone's not here, right?
Stephanie, I have a joke, all right? But, you know, I just feel like we're in a really good spot. We, every district has its challenges. I've said this all along, we're not, at least right now, we're not looking at cutting staffing, doing those types of things. We're just, we continue to do what's best for kids, what's best for our staff, and keep focusing on that mission, that vision, portrait of a graduate, our target areas are gonna change a little bit, action steps change a little bit, but we're gonna do what's best for kids and we'll adapt and overcome. So I do thank you guys for being here today. If you want to take some lunch with you or some dinner with you.
I have to adjourn the meeting.
You do have to adjourn the meeting. Need a motion to adjourn this.
But hold on, before I adjourn the meeting, I do want to just review some things from today. So some highlights that I've just been taking notes on today, and then I'll give you an opportunity to do that in a line, is something I continuously heard and I actually, uh, Stephanie Walker did say it in our, but like, how important communication is key, right? And I think it's just so very important for us all to always tell our own story and be united as a, as leaders of the district and proactive and transparent. I think we do a great job, um, but continuing to tell that positive story from us as district leaders, I think is so really important. And I'd love to see how we can continue to do that. I think we do a great job, like, day-to-day in the different buildings on Facebook of like little things happening here and there. Um, but honestly, uh, trying to streamline like all the recognitions that happening, I mean, we learn about these things here and it's just, how great is it to share with, um, our parents and our community out there? Um, and even the individuals who are in the older population who don't have kids anymore here, but they care so very much um, about this district. Um, so continuing to tell our own story, I think, is a thing that came out today. Uh, and plan to address, um, some things that we heard today was attendance, right? How do we improve, um, attendance and engagement? Um, the space issue, we'll continue to fight and figure out a plan, um, to get us through. And then ways to improve, uh, I like to call it mental wellness of, um, our youngest kiddos, but not, not only of the students of the district, but also of our staff of the district, right? Like, sometimes this work can be exhausting. Um, and what we should be doing is supporting one another and not tearing each other down and building one another up and supporting you guys as administrators. So, um, I think I just wanna share that you absolutely have that from us. Um, and then I want to thank all of you for coming and spending this day with us. Uh, I understand it's a Saturday. Um, I have family out there participating in stuff that I'm missing as well, and I know you guys are too, and um, that means a lot to me because you're taking time away from your most prized, prized possessions. Um, always thrilled at the exceptional things we're doing. Some highlights, Claremont County news by GNN, that's something new that I heard today. Um, PD opportunities that we're doing with our professional staff, uh, safety continuous plans and improvement. Uh, so it's very thankful for those. Academic kickoff at Mark Cook, right? Our Warriors wouldn't be our Warriors at the high school if we didn't, um, start to prepare them right at the lowest levels. And we do an exceptional job there. The servant leader group at Spalding, the career connection in clubs at GMS, a bunch of really great, powerful things we're doing. And then, of course, the Ascend Academy. And I love, and Stephanie Walker said, I like to quote it all the time, but that all of our graduates leave with some kind of plan, whether it's college, career, military, or just a plan to continue on after, um, life. And I think that is so very important. Um, today, we could share the PowerPoint with us because there are a lot of links in there. Um, we don't, we don't have that. Uh, we're gonna come away with some kind of five, five-year forecast with option three, um, that you guys will update us on. And then feedback, more time next year. And that's everything, that kind of my summary for today. Is any, did I miss anything? Would you be like to add?
Can I add something?
Yes.
I just wanna say thank you to you guys, the Department of Staff and the Department of Education. Um, being in Claremont County, um, when the teachers would go out and they would interact with other Claremont County schools, they would always say they were the ones leading the PV sessions, and they were the ones that were giving ideas because of the direction of, of the team of you and the support that we have from you guys. Uh, and I think deep down, I just kinda felt like, well, yeah, this is the star of Claremont County, right? But now we're in High Ames, which is not just Claremont County. It's Warren County, it's the ECC schools. And when my teachers went out to the PV sessions, they were still the ones talking about the cutting edge and being ahead and being aware of all of those things. And that's because of you guys, so just wanna say, you're doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So all in all, I think it's a great day. I think we're moving in the right direction. We're planning a lot of great things for the future. And it's because we have a lot of great people doing a lot of great work. Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn? Not so quick.
You couldn't give up with that?
Sorry.
Uh, Mr. West?
Yes.
This is where it came?
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky?
Yes.
The rare?
Yep.
This is great.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you truly.